Good morning, and I'd like to call the Door County Board of Supervisors to order on Tuesday, June 27th at approximately 9:00 a.m. Please join me for pledge allegiance to the flag.
(inaudible)
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 Roll call.
(inaudible)
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 No, neither is Biz.
(laughing)
What?
I thought it said, "Present."
Boy, you gotta retrain 'em every month.
Yep.
We have a formant every 21 are present. Presentation of the agenda.
Some of...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Correspondence. Put it in your packet is the unassigned fund balance. Number six, public comment. Does anybody wish to make a public comment? Please state your name and your residence.
Good morning. Don Franks, Fish Creek. Looking at the agenda, I'm not sure if the Crime Prevention Foundation K-9 Unit Resolution is coming up for a vote today, or if there's just gonna be a report on it that would affect my comment.
It's for both.
It's up for a vote, thank you. Well, I'm appearing today in an admittedly slim hope of convincing this body to prevent a grave mistake in judgment from being made if this board joins in okaying a clear failure on the part of the law enforcement committee to perform their described oversight function of the Door County Sheriff's Department when they unanimously passed the deceptive, flawed, and overly broad resolution which is before you today. Dark money, a privately-supported funding mechanism outside the county's immediate oversight, has been established at the behest of the Sheriff's Department with the help of Door Community Foundation. With the unanimous approval of the draft K-9 Unit Resolution by Law Enforcement Committee, that committee willingly surrendered a significant portion of their responsibility overseeing the Door County Sheriff's Department. I spoke here previously and attempted to warn this board about the potential dangers of initializing or enabling any financial privatization of civilian law enforcement outside of the county's purview. Financial privatization of aspects of the Sheriff's Department has been created. This county board has a choice today to either endorse the Sheriff's Department's actions or to be complicit with surrender of this portion of oversight—I realize this isn't the entire oversight—inherent in this K-9 Unit Resolution, or to withhold your endorsement and consider attempting to regain most of the oversight which the Sheriff's Department has legally circumvented, you know, from this body, with the advice of the Door County Foundation, a private foundation which, by the way, has their own vested interests that will not always necessarily coincide with those of county government. While advertised intended uses of this dark money are arguably versions of child exploitation— got that? —child exploitation for Sheriff's Department public relations goals, and the Sheriff's Department Crime Prevention Foundation website propaganda points to property crime being caused by illegal drug use, a fear-mongering tactic in my opinion, completely ignoring mental health, addiction, poverty, lack of equal education, and economic opportunity as key contributors to crime prevention problems. Public costs associated with the K-9 program are minimized and obscured in today's addendum to the resolution. Really, an entire squad car and a deputy's main duty focus are being redirected here, necessarily shifting costs to a specialized operational tactic. I'm not judging the tactic, I'm just saying, let's be honest about the expenses. That's a cost, and the resolution isn't really informing anybody about that. Therefore, I'm urging an unequivocal rejection of even the appearance of an official county endorsement of the county Sheriff's Department's actions in liberating itself from this portion of county oversight, an action deceptively portrayed, disingenuously stated in this resolution, and I would further ask the board and the chair to consider installing law enforcement committee personnel more concerned with that committee's total assigned oversight task. That appears to be the case witnessed—that doesn't appear to be the case witnessed with the cursory concern thus far exhibited in considering this K-9 resolution. There are ways to bring back some of this control over what the Sheriff's Department has done here, so on that—I'll end on that issue. Second issue, I'll try to be really quick. Marinette County's opposition to the Back Forty proposed sulfide mine—I know it's on the agenda. I was disappointed that a copy of the actual Marinette County resolution was not in the info packet, and I have not been able to find an answer as to where it might have gone. I do have email confirmation from Marinette County's clerk that she did mail the resolution to the county board chair back in September of 2016, and the resolution did call for the governor, secretary, DNR Secretary Stepp, and our GOP legislators to show some concern about the potential dangers of the mine, and I can—I just don't know, you know, why that resolution hasn't been brought forward as part of the committee so far. So, anyway, thank you for listening, and I wish I had a chance to debate any comments in opposition to this, but I don't, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in public comment? Any supervisor response to public comment? Approval of the minutes of May 23rd, 2017, regular meeting.
Motion.
Approve.
Second.
Changes, additions, deletions, corrections, grammatical remarks, or other issues with the minutes? Not all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
We're going to have a report on the Kana Island.
Yes.
Amy?
(pause)
Good morning. I'm Eric Allison, Door County Parks Director, and Amy Paul, the Executive Director at the Maritime Museum. As everybody's probably well aware, the county and the Maritime Museum has been in a partnership the last 10 years or so with operating Kana Island for visiting—for visitors, for the public, touring the lighthouse and the buildings there, and we've also been embarking on restoring the buildings out there. We've broken up the project into four phases since we went out for bid—I guess it was three years ago now in 2014—to do the restoration work on the light tower and the four other outbuildings on the island. We completed Phase One last year of all the exterior portion of the light tower and the keeper's house, and now we're working on Phase Two with bids we just received last week for the three outbuildings on the property—the oil house, the privy, and the barn. Just wanted to give a status update of where we're at. We had the resolution come to county board back in April, basically authorizing us to move ahead with bids for Phase Two, and the bids that we received—we had a Park and Airport meeting yesterday morning, kind of looking through things with Paul, with Imel Construction, our construction manager for the project. Unfortunately, the bids were fairly high, higher than what we were anticipating, especially when we had the whole project bid out three years ago. The outbuildings were an alternate in that first bid, and due to the cost, we just did the exterior work, as I mentioned. These three buildings, the Parks Committee yesterday recommending moving ahead with the base bid, which is just the oil house and the privy, because of the costs. Maritime Museum is still working on another grant. We're hopeful to have that come in in the next month to where we could consider doing the barn also, all three outbuildings on the property. The cost from the bids would be roughly $415,000 for all three buildings. Our construction manager is gonna come back to our Airport and Parks Committee meeting on July 12th to give us, I guess, the final numbers, looking at reducing some of the components of the bid as far as the sidewalk and electrical work, different things we might be able to hold off and finish at one of our later phases. I guess Phase Three would be moving the gift shop out of the keeper's house to make room in there to restore all the inside portions of the keeper's house and the light tower, which would be—
Also, the Fresnel lens needs to come out of the tower, per the Coast Guard Government. So, we'd like to house that on the island, and that be part of an interpretive center, which is Phase Three, as Eric's mentioning. Then to move the store out of the inside of Kana Island so that we can fully restore the inside.
Yep, and then Phase Four would be restoring all the inside portions of the main light tower and keeper's residence. So, I guess at this point, we just wanted to give an update of where the bids were at. Working with Grant and our construction manager, in a couple months or a couple weeks at our next Park Committee meeting, we should have an idea whether we could move ahead with all three outbuildings or just the first two. We'd have to probably bring another resolution back at the July county board meeting if we're changing the scope of work, going down from the three outbuildings just to two of them, and try to do the barn in one of our later phases.
Another reason, too, for choosing, you know, one building over the other is that the oil house and the privy, the roofs are caving in, so they are in desperate need. If we let them go much longer, that's gonna constitute even more construction costs as it's—it's no longer just repair, then it's reconstruction, and those costs jump considerably.
Thanks, Amy, for adding that. It's certainly something that, when we get these three outbuildings done, we'll have all of the exterior—the five buildings on the property, I guess, preserved and obviously out of the weather as we work on the interior work into the future. I guess to this date here, at the end of June, we have $200,000 committed for Phase Two out of our Kana Island Restoration Fund, and about $140,000 that the museum has raised with donations and grants. Dan?
I'd just like to remind everybody that all this is being done not at the expense of property taxes, it's being done by donations of—the Maritime Museum is procuring—and the attendance that Kana Island costs to go there, and that's all going into how this is being done. Just to make it clear that we're not taking property tax dollars to do this.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, I just want to remind Eric, when you talk about the barn, we're talking about a storage shed, so if—it's kinda two—two names, really, right?
Yeah, yep, it's used interchangeably, storage shed or a barn. It historically was used by the keepers and their families, lighthouse keepers basically, for cattle and horse, I think, years ago, and used for storage in between there.
Currently, our storage facility is in the toiletry building that we built—you guys built—several years ago. So, the current operation stuff is in the toilet building. So, the barn is significant historically as far as it did house family members and it did hold livestock.
Anybody else? Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
We're gonna move down to item 13, harassment training. Kelly, Jody?
Morning.
Good morning. I'm gonna turn these lights on just a little bit so you can see the screen a little bit better.
So, good morning. I'm here to introduce Jody Tross from AEGIS. She is our liability. She works with the liability side of our insurance for the county here, and she's gonna be conducting harassment training for you this morning. She's gonna keep this one down to about 45 minutes to an hour. The employee base—for the entire county actually had a bit more extensive presentation from Jody. We did several sessions this last couple of months, and they were about two hours in length, so we covered a lot of territory in the harassment area, and today Jody has kinda summarized that and put it into little—just under an hour for you. So, Jody Tross.
Good morning. So, it doesn't seem to be working, Jill. I don't know.
Try—try our thing, maybe.
Oh, you got the—could escape once on your thing, get rid of that.
There we go. All right.
Well, good morning. Thank you for having me. You are a member of the Wisconsin County Mutual Insurance Corporation. You own your own insurance company. I don't know if you realize that, but it's pretty unique. We've been around for over 20 years. About 20 some counties got together in the 80s when liability coverage was very difficult to obtain, and formed their own insurance company. So, everything that we do and offer you is because of your choices that you make. It is all county board supervisors who sit on our Board of Directors, as well as we insure 52 counties in the state, about 130 school districts, and over 100 municipalities. So, we work with all public entities. So, this training is one that, when we look at employment practices and civil rights, is one of our larger losses because it's not capped in the state of Wisconsin, goes into the federal court system. And so, for many years, we do harassment training. So, we do diversity training that covers the protected classes, but we also significantly cover sexual harassment training, and it's obviously due to the lost history that we've had in the last 20-some years. So, that's why that first one is focused. We've included and added, over the years, the last five or six years, workplace bullying as well at the end. So, I'm gonna just do kind of a summary of what we did earlier in the year throughout the county. It was countywide. There was a bunch of different days and hours that people could attend, and you guys did a phenomenal job of that, so thank you very much. And as supervisors, you have a lot of responsibility because employees can make a complaint to you or someone from the public as well, so that is why we also include the county boards in our training program. As I'm doing this, please don't hesitate to ask any questions, raise your hand. I don't have to go in a particular order, I can stop and address it at that time. We're talking about what different rights and responsibilities are, and I'll give you—actually, in the two-hour session, we give a lot of case examples that are from our public entities over the years, which obviously I will leave out a lot of those today as we go along. But as a supervisor, you are responsible for—as we do the training—for stopping any observed acts, taking immediate action, assisting any employee with a complaint. And the reason I talk about that one is it could be someone that comes up to you in the coffee shop, or at a baseball or soccer game this summer, and they may have a complaint for you, and that needs to come forward. And it doesn't matter who that employee is, it could be someone who complains on a regular basis, okay? So, when we talk about a civil rights issue, we wanna stop and address it and take it through the protocol and follow your policy. Make sure that no retaliation occurs against that person for putting in a complaint. As we train the employees throughout the months, this spring, we talked about that once they're trained, their conduct is forbidden, so this was kind of the last chance, right before the training, as well as encouraging them to report any acts and to cooperate in any type of investigation. Sexual harassment can occur toward and between coworkers, elected official board members, the public, the volunteers, independent contracted service workers, someone that's coming in for employment for the county. The same-gender and third-party harassment are two of the key ones that were added way back now in 1998 after three Supreme Court decisions, which is seriously almost 20 years old now. But before that, we didn't have same-gender harassment, and we didn't have third-party harassment. So, before that time, that was not considered as harassment. This is the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission definition. This is in your policy, which, by the way, I do a lot of these trainings throughout the state. You have one of the best-written policies in the state. So, phenomenal job, and pat on the back to the administration team for that great policy and for you adopting it as well. There are two main types of sexual harassment. The first one is quid pro quo, which is a Latin term meaning "this for that," and that's when employment action is based on the acceptance or rejection of unwelcome sexual behavior. That's always when it's a supervisor or someone in authority that withholds or offers work-related benefits in exchange for sexually-related favors. That one's not new. That one's been around for many, many years. So, it has to be a tangible job action, threat to not hire someone for a new position, promote them, change in job benefits, give them the worst tasks available, that type of thing. By the way, all these—this presentation will also be sent to you as well for review after. You're welcome to look at it and ask any questions. Who's a supervisor? This is a key one when we look at a tangible employment action. Any of you in this room would be considered a supervisor under this, as well as any department head or supervisor from another department. It does not have to be my direct line of supervisor. It can be anyone that I feel has control or power over my position in the county. Hostile work environment is what changed from 1998. It really changed how we look at what is sexual harassment. It's unwelcome sexual behavior that creates an offensive, hostile, or negative workplace that negatively—sorry, hostile or intimidating workplace that negatively affects a person's ability to do their work. This can be so many different things, and I'll give you some examples as we go along, but it does not have to be a supervisor and an employee. It could be someone from the public who comes in and is harassing one of our employees. It can be our employees harassing a vendor, like the UPS delivery person as they come into the building. It can be a wide variety. It can coworker to coworker. Okay. What really matters with hostile environment is perception over intention. It doesn't matter that my intention was, "I thought I was just complimenting Steve about his looks and his clothing." That truly doesn't matter. What matters is his perception of that. He's going, "Thumbs up," he gave me. So, and I think that's really important to recognize, that again, it doesn't matter what my intention is, what matters is his perception when we look at a hostile work environment. Now, if I give him a compliment once, that is not sexual harassment. When we talk about hostile work environment, there's frequency and severity involved. So, it would be every month for the county board meeting that I make comments about his clothing or his looks, okay? So, it would be repetitive. What's unwelcome? The employee or the person did not solicit the conduct, and they regarded it as undesirable. Some different signs of unwelcome conduct. Complaint is made, that's the obvious one. They tell you that the joke or the comment is not accepted or appreciated, and they ask you not to make it again. They sigh, "Ah," and walk away. They avoid you in the future. They don't have direct eye contact with you. They put their head down. I just—last week, I was in another county, and I was asked to view the videotape from a county board meeting because a comment was made that was inappropriate. And it kinda started like this. It was a county board meeting, it was an evening meeting, and there were several members who had birthdays, and one member had an anniversary that evening. And so, they talked about really making the meeting move along. And so, as the department head was giving their presentation, one of the members said, "I know we really wanna get done quickly and early here, but I do have a question." And another board member made a sexual comment about that board member and his anniversary, and how many years he's been married in his sexual life. In the video, you hear a couple laughters, you hear a couple nervous laughters, and you hear very audible gasps. That's an indicator that it was unwelcome. Now, as the board of supervisors and administrators in tow, do we need to stop and address that? Absolutely. Once you have been notified of something inappropriate or observed something inappropriate, it has to be addressed. 20 years ago, would that have been sexual harassment? Absolutely not. We didn't have hostile work environment. Comments like that were pretty commonplace. Today, the rules have changed. If it is equal initiation and participation, it is not sexual harassment. So, if I have staff members who give each other shoulder massages or hugs and kisses, that is not sexual harassment, it is equal initiation and participation. Now, we always talk about people who are married in the county, because I have this everywhere I go. Well, it's okay, right, if we hug and kiss in the parking lot or in the building as we walk in? And my question always is this: Have you ever had a complaint? Do people say things like, "Take it home," or "Do that somewhere else?" And the answer is always yes, because that can be a hostile work environment. It's that third-party sexual harassment. Between the two of them, it is equal initiation and participation, but it's the other people who are nearby that observe it that are uncomfortable, and that counts. Sex discrimination is covered by federal and state law, but it is different than sexual harassment. That's treating people differently because of their gender. Well, you know, her husband, he has a really good salary and really supports the family. We don't need to give her a raise. Or, "All the females in the room should make more than the males." Or, I don't know, "We have enough females in that department. I think we need to hire a man this next time." That can be gender discrimination. Verbal sexual harassment. Calling a person "sweetie," "dear," "hunk," "dow babe," or "honey." This is for a lot of people, that we do this because we don't recall people's names. My number-one complaint up there is "dear," calling people "dear." I had a female county board supervisor come up to me at a convention and complain about one of my coworkers because she called her "dear," which is same-gender sexual harassment in a hostile work environment. What was my response? It was incorrect. I said, "But she calls everybody 'dear.'" And she said, "That doesn't matter," and she was absolutely correct. So, I had a sheriff in one of my counties, he was called the "Hunkster" through the whole courthouse. Okay? So, some might think that's a compliment, that they found he was good-looking, but it was also a sign of disrespect, and he didn't like it. Turning to work discussion to unwanted sexual topics, innuendos, or stories, unwanted asking about fantasies and dreams, unwanted sexual teasing, jokes, or remarks, unwanted sexual comments about clothing, body, or looks. This is a big one. I had a county who was doing a wellness program throughout the county. They were doing a great job. They had Weight Watchers in, they had Zumba and yoga, all kinds of things. They were working really hard on it. And one of the female employees came into the HR department, and the HR director looked at her and said, "You look great. I think we should have a county calendar next year." Was she offended? She was not. It was another person that was in the department at that time. That's, again, that hostile work environment. So, appropriate comments, please. I'm not here to tell you not to compliment someone. They get a new hairstyle, they lose some weight, they have, you know, they look great. You can give them that compliment, but it has to be respectful. I had a female county board supervisor who—a department head had just returned from Afghanistan, and she walked up behind him and said, "Hey, does that tan line go all the way down?" He was offended, and we did training for the board. So, I'm just giving you some examples of things that used to be okay and have been set in the past that actually has brought training to the board. Sexually suggestive sounds or gestures, making kissing sounds, whistling, howling, suckling noise, that type of thing, and repeatedly asking a person out on a date. So, obviously, we're in a fairly small community up here. We meet a lot of people that we work with or spend a lot of time with that we may want to choose to have a relationship with. That's certainly okay. People are allowed to date, but obviously, they can't repeatedly ask somebody out if they decline. We talked a little bit more about that in the two-hour training. Some nonverbal sexual harassment, you don't have to touch a person or to speak to them, and we can have a sexual harassment complaint. This picture's in here—you have a library in Door County—but things like this, the unwanted staring, looking at a person up and down, the elevator eyes, leering, can all be ones as well. Unwanted graphics on coffee mugs, hats, clothing posters, calendars, email messages, text messages. We talked a lot about the fact that there is a record of those for many, many years in our IT department, and often they are looked at in an investigation process as well, and that once you send it, you can't take it back, so be careful. Giving personal gifts—we have a lot of retirements and birthday parties as we go along. We gotta make sure that those gifts are appropriated for on-county premises. Physical sexual harassment is much more obvious. Unwanted rubbing or massaging a person's back or neck or shoulders. Again, if it's equal initiation and participation, that is not sexual harassment. Unwanted touching or pinching or cornering them. Unwanted hugging or kissing, brushing up against another person. We go back to the hugging and kissing real quickly. Unwanted touching or pinching or cornering them. Unwanted hugging or kissing, brushing up against another person. We go back to the hugging and kissing real quickly. Sometimes we have a tendency to say, "Someone's just a big teddy bear." Well, he gives everybody a hug and a peck on the cheek. That doesn't mean it's okay at work. And if someone's offended by that and that complaint comes in, typically what that shows is there's this huge history of it. I was doing a county board training a few years back, and one of the members raised his hand and he said, "I just received this from UW Extension this week," and it was a "give a hug" card. So he said, "Is that okay?" No, it's really not at work. Padding, grabbing, caressing, or fondling, and then exposing yourself. So when I first started doing this training almost 20 years ago, I thought, "Who exposes themselves at work?" And I have more cases than I'm going to give to you this morning, and some are pretty blatant. We had a male employee mooning other male employees. That same-gender harassment and exposing yourself. We had some people who came back to a county after Mardi Gras, and they had brought beads with them. And so the men started giving the women in the department the beads. And in turn, what happens in Mardi Gras in New Orleans, they lift their shirt and flash them. And then eventually, the women started giving the men their beads, and they started also flashing. So that is exposing yourself. This is stuff that happened right here in Wisconsin in our counties. So that's why we bring them up as examples. Obviously inappropriate, and definitely reasons for dismissal. Some facts about harassment. It is true that sexual harassment is generally about power and not sex. It is also true that men and women see sexual harassment differently. That is a fact of life. We always recommend, if possible, if there's an investigation, that we have a male and a female doing the investigation too. And that's just always something to keep in mind as well, because remember, it doesn't matter what my intention is. What matters is that person's perception. And if it is the opposite gender, it may be different than what you intended. Also, we used to see, years ago, we would have a group, let's say a highway department. At one point, sheriff's department, that were typically all male. Or a female department that was typically all female, like human services, social services, child support. That anything went. It was okay. It was appropriate. And I got it. I'm here to tell you, we hear complaints on those on a regular basis. Doesn't matter if it's the same gender. It is true that training discourages harassing behavior. That's why we're here this morning. That's why we did countywide training. We were not-- there was no particular reason that we did it. We request that we do it about every five years. We also have it available online, all three topics. Diversity and sensitivity, sexual harassment, and workplace bullying. But we really like to come in and be able to tell examples of what's been happening as well. It really makes people think about sometimes maybe some of the things we say or do and what is appropriate. Some mistakes about sexual harassment. It's not a problem. We have no complaints. Harassment is caused by a person's clothing. It does not matter what that person is wearing. It does not give us the right to sexually harass them, look them up and down, or make them feel uncomfortable. If their clothing is inappropriate for their job or their position, it is their department head or supervisor's responsibility to address that with them. Sexual harassment is a women's problem. Definitely more complaints come into the county mutual from women, but certainly men are sexually harassed as well. We do get those complaints. I think more often than not, they just don't put the complaint in. It isn't because they're not sexually harassed. And harassment typically doesn't just go away. We do not want to lose good employees. We are in a tougher environment than we have ever been in the past in our public entities. It's a little bit harder to keep people. They have more choices, more movement. We don't ever want to lose people because of any type of harassment, discrimination, or bullying. How do we stop it? Employees are asked in your policy, if possible, and if they are comfortable, to talk to that individual. Do they have to do that? Absolutely not. If Steve would come up to me and say, "Jody, we need to talk. Your behavior's inappropriate," and he's very serious, he's looking me directly in the eye, and he's not joking around, I might hear him. Or I might say something like, "Gee, are you having a really bad day?" And hopefully, he'd say, "It has nothing to do with the day I'm having. Your behavior needs to stop." And majority of the time, that will work. The person will realize that their intentions were not well-received and change that. Does the employee have to do that? Absolutely not. They can also go forward and follow your policy guidelines. Reasonable person standard. That's what the court system uses if it's a gray area. When we talk about hostile work environment, many of these comments and how it's taken, it can definitely be a gray area. If it gets all the way to the court system, they use the reasonable person standard. Would a reasonable person have been offended by that or found that to be a hostile work environment? You have, seriously, probably my favorite policy. And we have 52 counties. I work with over 20 of them. So very well-written, very easy to read. I strongly encourage, if you have not read it lately, it's about three pages, to go over it. We have done training throughout the entire county. You also could be the person. You could be my next-door neighbor, and I'm more comfortable coming up and telling you my complaint than someone else. So I could come to you. It doesn't have to be that you're in a particular committee. You are considered a supervisor of the county. So please take a look at it so you know what your protocol is and that. So by rights, as an employee, if I have a complaint or someone from the public, I can go to any supervisory person. It does not have to be my direct-line supervisor. Obviously, that's preferable, but I don't have to. Or it could be human resources, or county administrator, or I could go to grant, to court counsel. So there's a lot of different options. That's why I talk about the fact that I could come to you as well. So you want to make sure that you know what your policy is. You never want to admit there's harassment. Remember, if someone comes to you with a complaint, you are hearing one side of that story. We need to do the complete investigation. There are some horrendous stories out there over the years that if someone came up to me, it's difficult to not want to say, "Oh, my goodness gracious. That's crazy." So you cannot do that. You want to be able to make sure that you know what the policy is, hear them out, and then we need to move forward with the investigation. Discipline can be up to and including termination. You allow complaints to come in verbally or in writing. Confidentiality is really important, as much as possible. To not talk about this outside to other family members or people as well. We want to keep confidentiality as much as possible. Following the procedure and your policy is the most important thing to do. These are some dangerous words that I went over with some of the members and employees to talk about. If you're saying this or thinking this, you want to think about what you're saying. When a harassment complaint is made, you want to make sure you do the investigation and protect against retaliation and follow your policy. So this is actually an envelope with the lips sealed. So this is something I always say. Remember, the perceptions of others are more important than your intentions. If you wouldn't say something in front of your mom, your kids, or your spouse, don't say it at work. It is a rule of thumb. My grandma is 98 and a half. She's my rule of thumb that I use. I'm pretty sure she's not the prude I make her out to be. But if I wouldn't say it in front of my grandma, I don't say it at work, and it's really worked well for me. I'm in a lot of public entities all over the state, and it works. And if you're ever thinking, "I know I probably shouldn't say this, but please stop." I was at the county convention a few years ago, and I heard a county board chair come up behind me, and I recognized his voice, and that's what he started to say. And I swung around, and I really was going to say something to him or cover his mouth, because I knew what was coming next wouldn't be appropriate. But his wife was standing next to him, and I didn't, and he got a harassment complaint. Because I knew who he was saying to. He was going to get in trouble. So if you're thinking that, "I know I probably shouldn't say this, but oh, well." You don't want to say it. Okay, so I gave you some clickers today. They're those little white things that are put on. They look like a remote control. They do not work at home, by the way. They are anonymous. A is the one. B is the two. So go ahead and answer. Sexual harassment is usually a power issue. True or false? That is true. Eighty-six percent is correct. Sexual harassment usually is about power. The courts consider the person's intentions more than the victim's perception. True or false? The courts consider the person's intentions more than the victim's perception. True or false? You are correct. That is false. It doesn't always matter what my intentions were. What matters is that person's perception. Nice job. A claim of hostile environment usually requires documentation of several offensive acts or a pattern of offensive conduct. True or false? False. That is actually true. When we talk about hostile work environment, those little comments or innuendos, it has to be repetitive. Remember, my compliment to Steve can't just be at one county board meeting. It has to be every month. So when we talk about hostile work environment, it is several different acts. It's very confusing. Sexual harassment violations can lead up to and including termination. True or false? That is correct. That is true. An employee must report a complaint to their supervisor. True or false? You are correct. That is false. Okay? It can be anyone in supervisor or management position. Okay. So what we typically do when we do this training, I do it, it's called the trio of training. So we go start with sexual harassment, and then we go into the other protected classes by federal and state law, and then we end with workplace bullying. So people are our most valuable resource, and we know that if they feel valuable and sense the support of others, they will not only be more happy, but they will be more productive as well. So I start with a poem this morning. The author is unknown. Six humans trapped by happenstance in bleak and bitter cold. Each one possessed a stick of wood, or so the story's told. Their dying fire in need of logs, their first woman held hers back. For of the faces around the fire, she noticed one was black. The next man looking across the way saw one nut of his church. It couldn't bring himself to give the fire his stick of birch. The third one sat in tattered clothes as he gave his coat a hitch. Why should his log be put to use? To warm the idle rich. The rich man just sat back and thought of the wealth he had in store and how to keep what he had earned from the lazy, shiftless poor. The black man's face bespoke revenge as the fire passed from sight. For all he saw in his stick of wood was a chance to spite the white. And the last man of this forlorn group did not accept for gain. Giving only to those who give was how he played the game. The logs held tight and dust still hands were proof of human sin. They did not die from the cold without. They died from the cold within. That poem addresses many different stereotypes and biases that each and every one of us has. Every person has them. And addressing them and looking at them is really important when we talk about this particular training. Diversity is a very simple definition. It's the differences that make each and every one of us unique. And our goal is to remain open-minded, working together, and serving in a respectful environment. So we talk about not only treating employees, but the public that we serve with dignity and respect every day. These are the protected classes by federal and state law. We talk about age. When does age discrimination start? At what age do you think? Anybody? It's actually by law. It is one particular age. Forty, which depends on what age range you're in, but I think that's really young. That doesn't seem to be older to me at all. But what we do find, and we do get age discrimination complaints in many different ways right now. We have a very large baby boomer population. I am the youngest age of the baby boomers. I am 52. I still have quite a few years to work. But with that, we have people who are saying, "Come on, old man. You need to retire. My son could really use your job." Or they make comments about ARP. And we joke about that, but I've actually had some employees recently in our counties ask me, "I have ARP up there. What's ARP?" So we have different generations, right? So pushing someone out the door because of their age. We do have a reverse age discrimination, I believe. May not be covered by federal or state law at this point in time, but sometimes how we treat our younger staff is if, "Oh, you don't know. We've tried that before you were ever born. It doesn't work here." Comments like that, or, "You're not going to be here long enough. You're going to move on." Or, "That just doesn't, you know, you don't know enough yet. Wait till you've been around a little longer." So we actually have kind of a reverse age discrimination as well, treating the younger staff with disrespect too. So I often have younger staff will bring that up too. So I like to mention that. Race. Obviously, race is an interesting one as we go through. We'll talk just a little bit more about that. Creed, color, disability, marital status, gender, ancestry, religion, membership in certain military units, national origin, genetic information, sexual orientation, and arrest conviction record. By far, the most sensitive, and one of the areas that we do get complaints and lawsuits in, is under sexual orientation. So for many years, it used to be against the gay and lesbian population. Today, we also have another category. Remember that we also insure 130 school districts, which is what? Transgender. So nothing new, but a lot more awareness out there. We insure 130 school districts. I did an informal survey at the State Education Convention about three years ago. I only had two school districts who did not have a student who was transgender at the time. So when we look at transgender, that is something else that we do awareness about. We did training on that as well. We have people in the public that we serve who are transgender or may have a different gender identity as a child and those types of things. So that is also part of that as well. Harassment can be physical or mental abuse. Most of the time, it's verbal comments that insult or degrade a group. Which language is spoken by 37 million Americans at home? Now you have A, B, C, D, and E. German? French? I covered it. I don't. Vietnamese. Thank you. Spanish or Chinese? To give you a reference, English is spoken by 231 millions of American Americans at home. So this language is spoken by 37 million. It is Spanish. It's 84%. Which one of those is 2.3 million? Anybody guess? Chinese. Yep, absolutely. If you look at the chart afterwards, it actually goes English, Spanish. This is from the 2011 consensus. Tagalog. Anybody know what Tagalog is? What language? It's a language of the Philippines. My youngest son is adopted from there. So Tagalog, and then Vietnamese, and then a French, Korean, and German. When we look at this, this is interesting in Door County, because you obviously have different languages here, right? Because you bring in personnel from other countries to work as well. So I often will ask, as I'm-- I love to come up here as well. I live in Appleton. So I spent a lot of time in Door County. But I will ask people, "Where are you from?" Because I find it so engaging and interesting to travel that far from another country. It must be difficult. So you do have many different languages in the United States as well. If I went around the room, we could ask you what you are. You know, "Are you Irish? Are you..." I'm Belgian, right? Big Door County as well. You look at different nationalities. You can't tell that by looking at us. If my son, who's Filipino, walks in the door, can you tell that he's from a different nationality? Absolutely, because of the color of his skin. So when we look at that, this, we talk about implicit bias. Do we treat someone differently because of their gender, their religion, their race? This was in pools up till about two years ago. It's from the American Red Cross in the pools across the country. If you look at the cool behavior, it is all children who are white, or their parents are white. If you look at the non-cool behavior, they are children of color. So that is an implicit bias. I hope that someone had purposely designed this poster this way, but it just was out there until about two years ago. So when things are very visual, it can be different. I'm not going to play this for you this morning, but I played it for your staff this spring. It is a wonderful song that is very simple. "Don't Laugh at Me." If you like a little bit more modern or popper country music, I suggest you look at Mark Willis's. If you're an old fan favorite of Peter, Paul, and Mary, they are the original singers of this song, and it's excellent. But it's a reminder of not laughing at people because they're different. "You don't have to be my friend. Just don't laugh at me." Respecting everyone is important. Always remember that the perception of others is more important than your intentions. "Sticks and stones will break my bones, but words will never hurt me." Is that true? No. Words hurt a lot. This is a saying Margaret Thatcher said in the movie The Iron Lady, but it's been around a long time. "Watch your thoughts, for they become words. Watch your words, for they become actions. Watch your actions, for they become your habits. Watch your habits, for they become your character. And watch your character, for it becomes your destiny." What we think, we become. Why do I mention that? Because it's important to think about what our own stereotypes and biases are. We We all have them. This is from a county administrator from another county. I did training last fall there. And she said, "Please tell my story." Now, this is a woman who rides a motorcycle with her husband for years, rides her own motorcycle, but had a real issue with people and tattoos. She had a perception of someone who had a tattoo, and it was not positive. So as a county administrator, could that be difficult? Absolutely. During the hiring process, how you treat someone, especially if the tattoo is very visible. Her and her husband had raised foster childrens beside their own biological children. And one day, her husband had died about four or five years ago. And about a year ago, one of her foster children had turned 18. And she came, she was calling her and saying, "I got this tattoo. Can't wait for you to see it." And this woman was going, "Oh, no. How am I going to hide my distaste of this tattoo?" And so this young woman came running up to her at a party. And this is what the tattoo said. "Always on my mind, forever in my heart." And it was her husband's birthday and the day he died. Did it change her mind about tattoos? It did. Because she realized how important it must be to put something so permanent on your body, that it must be personal to them. And she said, "Please share my story." We all have stereotypes and biases. Identifying what those are helps you to address them. Who do you ask if you don't know what yours are? Anybody have teenage children? Old enough to know? Strong enough to tell you? Might be a spouse, it might be a coworker, but we all have them, and we should address them as we will. If you make a mistake, we all make mistakes or say something inappropriate. What do you do? You apologize. It goes a long way. Makes a huge difference in a relationship. Tolerance is a very simple definition. Not persecuting those who look, believe, behave, or act in ways that one may not personally approve of. We talk about the protected classes. Those are important because they are protected by federal and state law. So if we get a complaint of harassment or discrimination in those area, as Grant knows, right, they can cost us a lot of money. Grant always attends the corp council, defense council forum that we put into place too every year in the fall. That's one of the benefits of the Wisconsin County Mutual, along with many others, from our law enforcement challenge to our highway safety days, where we do eight hours of training. We trained over 1,000 highway employees this spring in May. So there's many things that we do as well. But when we talk about those protected classes, they can be very costly to the County Mutual for employment practices. That's why we focus on those as well. But what began to happen is this. As I would do the training, people would come up to me afterwards and say, "I have a problem. We have, I have harassment, but it's not based because I'm female, or my race, or my sexual orientation. It's regular harassment." So we started incorporating workplace bullying into our training. And the title of this one is Workplace Bullying. There is power in one voice. One person can make a difference. So this training goes all the way from our schools, when we talk about bullying, to the workplace, to our senior centers, our nutritional sites, our counties with a healthcare center. Bullying is intentional. It is aggressive. It is repetitive behavior involving an imbalance of power or strength. You might laugh when you look at this cartoon. One of the gentlemen is saying to the other, "Give me your donut, or I'll unplug your electric blanket." But it's a very serious concern for our senior centers and nutritional sites, and I do a lot of senior bullying training as well. True or false? Is general harassment other than protected classes by federal and state law covered by your county policy? You are correct. That is true. Not every county policy covers it, but almost all of them do today. Because general, it's titled "General Harassment Under Your Policy." That is correct. Bullying is a silent epidemic of psychological harassment and emotional abuse. This concerns me when I see this. Factors that increase the risk for bullying behavior. Significant organizational change. Have we had that in the state of Wisconsin the last few years? We have. We also have a large group of staff who are retiring. Managers and department heads who've been there for many, many years doing that job. And we hire new staff or bring people up through the ranks. Doing management training with that group is incredibly important. You have done that in this county. Not every county I have has. And that's a concern. Because most of us know, if you've ever been a manager, did you make mistakes the first couple of years? That you wish you could do over? Absolutely. So when we talk about this, it's really important that we're training that staff. Can be the best employee in that department, but to be a manager or supervisor is something completely different. Lack of policies, which we have policies here, so that is great. That's not a problem. The bully, is he always male and white and big? No. Do women bully? Very well. As a matter of fact, very well. So about half of the bullying truly is women. It is not someone who is big and bad, like we used to portray them in the old shows. Mobbing is one of my biggest concerns in a county, or any public entity. Where we are picking on one person, and everyone around them is well aware of it, but says or does nothing because, "Well, at least it's not me. I'm not the target." Let me tell you, what happens when the one in red goes away? There's a new one in red. So mobbing is a big concern. Also, my biggest reason it bothers me is so many people knew about it and could have done something about it, have been that power in one voice, and stood by, and didn't take a stand. So mobbing is a very big concern. I literally had someone in a county recently terminated because the copy machine ran out of paper. That's no joke. That was one of her tasks, and a department did a mobbing effect to make sure that she was unable to complete her tasks. That's scary. How bullying affects people? There are people that I have come up to me constantly after the training that will talk about when they reach this particular street, their stomach starts to hurt uncontrollably. Stomach aches are number one. Your stomach's related to your brain and how you feel, your mental health, sleep and digestive issues. It creates a lot, it's a big issue for people. Plus, how productive are you if you're being bullied? Not very much so. I think it's important to note what the workplace bully is like. It is very different than the playground bully, and the victim is as well. The workplace bully is a type A personality. They're very competitive. They like power. They like when people fear them. I did a department head training just a few years ago, and I got done with the training, and department head came up to me, and she said, "Could you come see me afterwards?" And another department head, who happened to be the sheriff, saw her come up to me. And it took me about 20 minutes to get up to her office. He worked in a different building. She used to work for him. And when he saw her come up to me, he wouldn't, stood in her doorway of her office, and just stood there. And he stared at her for 10 minutes straight. Didn't say a word, and walked away. What was that? Intimidation? Bullying? Absolutely. See, your husband is still a deputy for him. So the county administrator came up to me a few months later, and she said, "I had a department head who did not care for your workplace bullying training." I said, "Let me guess, a sheriff?" And she looked at me and said, "Why would you say that?" And I said, "You need to pay attention." And so an investigation did eventually entail, when the person came forward, walking on eggshells around that person. Because we don't know when they're going to explode. We don't want to set them off. I had a superintendent of a school, works two days a week, retired, small district. They set up a doorbell system, because he didn't come in the same days every week. And as soon as he pulled into the parking lot, the receptionist hit that doorbell, and what did that mean? Get out if you can. If you're director of pupil services, if you're facilities, you have the right to leave that building, and people left. That's walking on eggshells. That's a bully. Bullies often create power and control, and about 50% of the time, the bully is the boss or supervisor. The victim is the key point here, and then I'm going to wrap this up. But the victim is not the new person, the little person, the youngest person, or the most inexperienced person. When we talk about workplace bullying, the bully picks on the strongest person, the most respected, the most powerful, the most popular. Why? Because if they can take control over that person and weaken their power, it gives them more power. So the workplace victim is very different than the playground victim, or even in a senior center. When the bullies find targets that refuse to be controlled and intimidated, they often will escalate their behavior. We have people who scream and yell at people. They swear at them. Is that acceptable behavior in today's workplace? It is not. Demean them. Tear them down. Take credit for their work. That is one of the biggest complaints I hear from staff. People who take credit for their work. They came up with a good idea, they came up with that great spreadsheet, and someone else takes credit for their work. Training people on how to respond to a bully is really important. I compare it to first aid training, or the Heimlich maneuver. You had to have learned about it in order to be ready for it. So having responses to a bully is really important as well. Really? That's interesting. Why would you say that? Putting it back on them. Most of us stammer and walk away or get defensive, being ready for that person. So we talk about those solutions as well. As employers, having it as part of your policy is really important. Any football fans in here? So a few years back, the Miami Dolphins had a player in the locker room who made a complaint of bullying and harassment. And for about the first few hours of the next day, my worst fear became valid, was everybody said, "It is an NFL locker room. What do you expect to happen there? It's okay." And the Miami Dolphins came out and said, "It's not okay. We're going to do an investigation." And in the investigation, they found there was harassment and bullying, and terminated the player who was responsible. I relayed that to other departments that I've had in our counties. Certain departments who say, "Oh, Jody, you don't know what we see on a daily basis. It's okay that we talk that way." Or make those comments about a particular class. No, it's not. It is not okay. Doesn't matter what we see in our jobs or what we do. It doesn't make it okay for it to be inappropriate at work. There is power in one voice. Each person can make a difference and take a stand. Training is our number one goal with the County Mutual. Our goal is to prevent any claims of harassment or discrimination from ever occurring, so that Grant and Kelly have nothing to do in that area for their jobs. That's our goal. Today, do you have a greater understanding of workplace bullying, sexual harassment, and diversity and sensitivity? Yes or no? Yes, 94%. Can you make a difference in your county's workplace culture? 95% yes. Absolutely. Each person can make a difference. Any questions? Any comments?
You said this is going to be somewhere for us to...
Yes. I will send it to Kelly, and it can be sent out to the board. It'll be a PDF.
Along with our policy.
Absolutely.
Kelly requests to do that right away.
Yeah. You want to take a look at it? It's about three pages. I think it's 2.04, is it, with the, in your policy? And absolutely, it's a great time to do that. Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time. I made it under an hour. I'm really happy. So you have a great summer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to take a brief five-minute break.
Oh, sure. No, they need a five-minute break. I couldn't wait.
All right, we're back in session. I would ask Dan Osted to please come to the front of the room.
Oh, no.
Like to explain briefly.
You seen these turds up here?
And we're going to be, we're going to be doing some writing on them, and we'd like to have you call out some points to us, so we can make some issues concerning harassment training.
You're not bullying me now, are you?
You're being told to go there.
Not yet.
I think I, you finally got it done, huh?
You're spearheaded. Yep, you're going to rip that one down.
I can't. It's going hard.
It's a thing on me.
You just hit?
Go ahead.
You can start with that one.
Keep it going.
Beautiful.
Good one. Cool ear.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
They're beautiful.
Sandy did good.
Ken's taller, he's got to get the tall.
Yeah.
Short guys can't reach the top.
Well, I shouldn't have said that.
Steve. Steve. That's harassment, Steve.
Yeah.
I thought I was going to say it.
Just one quick comment is for the county board. The photos you're looking at was photography that was done by Ken Merrill. He's a professional photographer. The one on the right specifically you should recognize is actually on the cover of a magazine that won the state award as the best photo. And both of these photos were actually donated by him to us for use. And then, like I said, I will be doing a letter of appreciation and thanks to him for doing that, but I just wanted to recognize him for actually taking the time to donate some of his work as a professional photographer for us. So I really appreciate that, but I think they turned out beautiful. The one thing that you might ask is on the, especially the one on the right, you'll see kind of that white line. It's not really a misprint, but what it is, is because it's the duration that he had to have the lens open, that's actually a star that was actually just moving through the sky, and how that was being held done. So, but I still think it's pretty awesome, the photography, how it turned out. So anyways, just wanted to recognize him for his donation.
And I just want to say thank you to Dan. Dan came up with this original idea and kind of spearheaded getting this done, so thank you, Dan. Took a while, but we got it there.
It sure took about three years, I think. I've been here that long.
Okay, we'd like to stick with the special reports for the moment, and we're going to go down the presentation on pace with John Hockhammer.
Randy, are you jealous?
Just for a quick context, I asked John to come up. This has gone through the finance committee. What we'd like to do this morning is just have a brief presentation on what's being, it's called the PACE. And there's two items in the packet that relate to it. One's a resolution, and one is also an ordinance. And we thought it would be best to have John and representative explain the program and be able to answer any questions, so that we fully understand it. So with that, I'll let John start us off.
Thank you, Ken. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for having us today. Jason and I, Jason Stringer is with Wisconsin Energy Conservation Corporation, or if you hear us talk about WEC. Jason works for WEC, and he's the program administrator for PACE, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. I just wanted to say that I sat through the end part of Jody's presentation. She did the same presentation for the WCA staff a while back. She just does a really good job. It's just an additional benefit that you get through the Wisconsin County Mutual. So I commend you for taking advantage of that training. So for those of you that don't know me, I've been with WCA for a long time, but I'm also, I've been elected official, I was eight years on the county board in Manawak, and I was county board chair there, and the last 20-plus years on the city council in Verona, and mayor since 2006. So any time that I hear anything that's economic development, that always perks me up a little I was county board chair there, and the last 20-plus years on the city council in Verona and mayor since 2006. So anytime that I hear anything that's economic development, that always perks me up a little bit. And the really nice thing about PACE is it does two things. Not only does it do economic development, but it also, it promotes sustainability. And more and more counties and cities and villages are getting involved in sustainability issues. The other nice thing about PACE is that there's no federal, state, or local dollars involved in the program whatsoever. It's a voluntary program between the property owner and a lender. But we'll explain why the counties need to be involved. So it was through another program that I worked on with the Department of Natural Resources and other partners, called Green Tier Legacy Communities, and perhaps someday we can come back and talk about Green Tier, that I heard about PACE. And PACE stands for Property Assessed Clean Energy. And I'm going to be honest with you, it took me about three or four meetings before I really fully understood what PACE did, and being a little bit skeptical, I was, I kept thinking, what is the downside? Everything sounds so positive, what is the downside of PACE? And I've been working on PACE now for over two years, we have 19 counties in the program. When we leave here, 1 o'clock, we have a meeting in Calumet County, we'll have our first meeting with them, and we're meeting, we continue to meet with other counties. I can tell you that I have not found a downside. It is just a great economic development and sustainability tool, and it's something that we believe that all 72 counties should be involved in. Now, a couple other things, when WCA got involved in this, and we also found out in conversations that I was having with WEC and the DNR, Andy Phillips' name came up. And of course, Andy Phillips is general legal counsel to WCA. And we heard that Von Bresen was working on this program, and they're doing all the legal work pro bono, because they knew as a firm, it was the right thing to do as well. So we got all the right people in the room together, we started strategizing about how are we going to roll this out. And number one, we said that we wanted, because the counties were involved, we wanted it to be open and transparent. We wanted it to be an open market, so that any lenders could be involved in the program, it wasn't just national lenders that do PACE financing. We didn't want any additional liability to the counties, or workload on the counties, because we knew that if we did have additional burden or workload, the counties wouldn't be involved in the program. So some of the things that we are doing with the PACE Commission, and PACE in Wisconsin, are different than what any other state is doing in the country. So those are just a couple of the reasons. We really did our due diligence, we feel very strong about the program. There's a commercial PACE program nationally, and there's also a residential PACE program. We are not involved on the residential side, it's a completely different program, and if we were at some point to expand into the residential PACE program, we would go back to every one of the counties that got, got involved with the commercial PACE program, and ask for their permission to do so, and have them do their due diligence. So again, we're really excited about PACE Wisconsin, there's a lot of interest out there. We currently have 19 counties on board, and looking to expand that number. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jason. Jason, again, is with Wisconsin Energy Conservation Corporation. Last fall, the PACE Commission, the counties that were involved at that point, did an RFP, and WEC was a successful applicant to become the program administrator. We're very fortunate that they're Wisconsin-based, they're in Madison, they're doing work all over the country on PACE and a lot of other sustainability issues. So we're very, very, very pleased that we have WEC, and especially Jason as a partner.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks a lot for inviting us to come up here and talk about PACE Wisconsin. I'm going to try to fill in a few of the blanks, John did a really good job providing an overview. Again, I'm with Wisconsin Energy Conservation Corporation, we're a 37-year-old, Wisconsin-based, not-for-profit corporation that's been helping homeowners and businesses recognize the environmental, as well as the economic benefits of making primarily energy efficiency investments to their homes and facilities. So Property Assessed Clean Energy is really just an extension of our mission. We saw PACE really growing across the nation, and recognized the great benefits that our communities could have. We've got an active program in Milwaukee, the city of Milwaukee, but there are 32, 34 other states that have similar enabling legislation to our statute. We saw, you know, businesses growing and expanding, renovating buildings across the country, so we thought we'd try to extend those benefits to, from Milwaukee and the rest of the country, to the rest of the state of Wisconsin. And that's really the origin of PACE Wisconsin. So what is, what is PACE, briefly? It's a financing tool that gives commercial property owners access to low-cost, long-term financing. The financing can be used to fund energy efficiency, renewable energy, and water conservation retrofits to buildings. So really what that is, is this financing tool can be used to modernize buildings, so we're, we can use this tool to fund retrofits to, you know, any system, like the lighting systems, building controls and automation, we can upgrade HVAC equipment, old boilers. You know, we've got a couple of projects we're looking at across the state where the buildings have the original boilers in them, those boilers are over 100 years old. So this program is giving those property owners a tool to really modernize their facilities. What, the way the financing works, is the financings are justified by the energy and operating cost savings that the new improvements make to those facilities. So renewable energy, energy efficiency lowers utility bills, lowers operating costs, those savings pay for the financing. So they're self-supporting in this regard, and I think have a lot of benefits for our communities. The reason we are, we have to work with counties and local governments to make this tool available, is because this financing is secured by a special charge, which is a form of a tax assessment. There are 19 other, as John mentioned, there are 19 other counties in the state of Wisconsin that have adopted effectively the same ordinance that you're considering today, and the same resolution. I'll talk a little bit about those, but our, we're proud of our representative counties, our member counties, if you will. We've done a lot of good work to try to make sure we have good representation across the state, so we have members, member counties as far north as Bayfield and Ashland, we go down as far south as Racine, on the west side of the state, we're in St. Croix, La Crosse, Eau Claire, Dunn, and then back over to the Fox River Valley, in that area, we've got Fond du Lac, down toward Milwaukee, Washington County, very good, very good representation. We also have Marathon and Wood in the center of the county, or the center of the state, rather. So, again, the benefits, I think at the end of the day, the bottom line for local governments and communities, is that these, this financing tool can help stimulate economic development. This tool can be used to give, give, give property owners justification to reinvest in their buildings. This activity creates jobs. Local distributors are selling more, more equipment and services. It can increase the tax base as well. You know, improving these buildings helps boost the tax base. It gives counties that have sustainability goals a tool to help achieve those goals, which comes at no cost. And, you know, the participation in this program is 100% voluntary. So the ordinance that you're going to consider, what that ordinance does effectively is establish this PACE financing tool for your county. Again, it's the same ordinance that our 19 other members have evaluated and passed. The resolution, then, it, what the resolution does is effectively, the county becomes, with the resolution, you become a member of the Wisconsin PACE Commission. That's the commission, and the body of which those other 19 counties are a member. Then, within the resolution, you'll delegate your authority under that ordinance to that commission. You'll also appoint a member, an elected official will serve as your representative on the Wisconsin PACE Commission. The Wisconsin PACE Commission reviews and approves all of the transactions, and I should note that the member counties all withhold a veto right. If there's a project that's happening in your county, and you don't feel it's right for your county, you can always veto that, that project. So, and again, our role, just to wrap up, our role is to administer the program. And because of what we do, we make sure that the county doesn't have any operating costs or administrative expenses at all associated with this program. There are also private lenders that make the financing available, so this doesn't have an operating or capital obligation from the county whatsoever. Our role is also to review and approve projects, to make sure that they pass or comply with the established guidelines, so we improve the quality in that regard as well. We also do this kind of work recruiting counties and lenders to participate in the program. So I'll wrap it up there, please let me know if there's any questions, thanks.
I thought what I would do is perhaps give you an example, a lot of times people find this very helpful. So if you were a commercial property owner in Door County right now, and your boiler was 100 years old, and you decided to replace it, or it was, you know, going out and you had to replace it, you'd go to the bank, and the bank would say, "Okay, you have to come up with 40 to 50% of the money," let's say the boiler's $300,000. The property owner would have to come up with 40 to 50% of that money, they'd get their interest rate, and the repayment of the loan, the term of the loan would be somewhere between five to seven years. Under the PACE program, if it's approved in the county, the first thing that the property owner would have to do is get an energy audit done, that would certify that the savings, the efficiency savings will more than pay the principal interest on the loan. And once that energy efficiency audit is done, and that company has to financially guarantee that the savings will actually take place, or they pay the difference, so now the lender knows that the, the money is there to make the payments on the loan, they will borrow you the full amount of the loan, the full $300,000, so there's no money out of pocket, it's a slightly reduced interest rate, and the term of the loan is whatever the lifetime of that equipment or software might, might be. So if the boiler's going to last 18 or 20 years, you now have an 18- or 20-year payback, rather than a five to seven. So it becomes much more, you know, affordable for, for the property owner to do that. So we are open for any questions that, that you might have.
Ken?
Yeah, I'm sorry, maybe I'm just a little thick here. I get that, but where does the county come in?
The county, according to the legislation that has been passed, the county agrees to put, in the event of a delinquency of a PACE loan, the county agrees to put that on the property tax bill for that property owner, not for anybody else. And it's only done in the event of a delinquency. So let's say that there's a $300,000 loan, and the payments are $15,000 a year. If that property owner makes payments in year one, two, and three, but not in year four, that $15,000, and not the balance of the loan, that $15,000, which is delinquent, goes on the property tax bill as a special charge. The county just agrees to put it on as a special charge, they don't, they're not the enforcer to make sure that it gets collected, nor do they guarantee the note in any way. And I just want to point out that with some of the safety nets and precautions that are put in place with PACE legislation, there's 34 states and the state of, the District of Columbia that are utilizing PACE. And to date, since 2009, there's never been a delinquency on a commercial PACE loan in the country. That's pretty amazing. So we're not saying that there never will be a delinquency, but to this point, since 2009, there's never been a delinquency on a commercial PACE loan.
I have a few questions on a, from a lending perspective. Are there closing costs associated with this that would be exorbitant compared to other lending opportunities? Is my first one. Secondly, does it limit any commercial customers from obtaining other funding if they would so wish? And thirdly, are there any prepayment penalties?
Great, great questions. Starting with the first one, our, the process is entirely transparent, okay? So the, we started with a commercial PACE program, because we're talking about a business-to-business transaction. Businesses are sophisticated in the way that they secure capital, and they, they'll, they'll push for a transparent process. Our lenders make their, their terms and conditions very clear on their term sheet, so the borrowers can make educated decisions. I would say the closing costs and the fees are very fair, considering the work that has to be done to close a PACE, PACE transaction. So let's say the next question...
Are there any prepayment penalties?
They are, these...
Is it a longer amortization?
Thank you, yep. So what's unique about the financings, truly unique, and if you think about this from the perspective of a small business, it's, it's, there's nothing like it, to be able to get a hold of a financing term that can be 15, 20, 25 years long, fully amortizing. Because of those long payment terms, the lenders do offer prepayment, so that's important. So they're not locked in, they have the flexibility to prepay. There will be fees associated with prepayments, which are customary for these types of transactions. So, and that's negotiable at the end of the day, so.
Are there thresholds or limits on the amounts that can be lended? Minimums or maximums?
Sure. The program itself, PACE Wisconsin, doesn't impose limits on the amount of dollars that go out. What the program does do is put in some safeguards to make sure that property owners aren't over-levering their properties, so we've created some limitations there. And then we leave it up to the market to really set, set the limits. You know, the PACE lenders don't want to get into a position where they're over-levered either, because they're interested in getting their, their dollars back. Because the market is relatively new, we're not, we don't have as wide a band as we'd like. What we're available to offer, because of what our lenders will do, is they'll offer as low as $100,000, it'll go up to 20 million, though. So we're really good on the high end, but we'd like to do a lot more work to try to make sure this is an effective tool for small businesses. We'll continue to work on that as the program matures.
So $100,000 was your low and minimum, basically, is what you're saying?
Yeah. So we could fund a $100,000 retrofit to a commercial building, provided that it had adequate capacity to take on that debt.
We are looking, I would just add that, we are looking for opportunities where we could bundle some smaller loans. So the fixed cost of doing a loan is going to be the same, whether it's a big loan or a small loan, but, so we're looking at opportunities where we could bundle some smaller projects together into one loan. The other thing that I wanted to mention on the fees, when we looked at this, we just said, "We want this to be successful, we want it to be cost-effective." So I just wanted to confirm that WCA is not getting a piece of the action, the League of Municipalities, any of the other partners, with the exception of WEC. WEC is doing the heavy lifting, so they will get a, they get a fee based on, only on successful transactions, so only if a loan, a loan occurs. So they're the only ones that are getting any financial gain from this, but rightfully so, they're doing the work. We're doing it as an association, because we believe it's the right thing to do, and it promotes economic development. So with all the effort that we put into this program, we want to make sure that it's successful, so we want to see the fees as low as possible.
John?
Yeah? I guess I don't fully understand, what are you doing that our local bank can't do?
We're going to offer, again, loan terms, for, for a renovation loan, to provide a business a loan that can go 20, 25 years long, is, it's just a product that's not available in the market today. Small, loans of this type are typically available, like John said, for a five-to-seven-year term. What we're offering is a much longer term, which lowers the cost of the financing. So it's, it's a dramatically more affordable interest rate and financing structure that helps promote redevelopment in our, in our, in our, in our facilities and buildings and infrastructure.
But that does not prohibit any local lenders from being involved in the program, because we really believe that, when we got involved in this, we said that if we really want to see true economic development, that local lenders should be involved in the program. So there are national lenders out there that, all they do is PACE loans, they don't do anything but PACE loans. One of them happens to be located in Milwaukee, so it's, they're Wisconsin-based. But we want local lenders to get involved in the program, and that's really one of the next steps that we're going to do, is work with local banks. What we've heard to this point is, they want to see actual projects approved before they get involved in making the loan. But in no way do we want to prohibit any local lender, if they want to become involved in, in PACE financing, do, we want to stop them from participating in the program. And one of the questions that came up in Ozaki County is, if there were a loan in Ozaki County, if we would dictate to them, if PACE Wisconsin would dictate which lender they would use? Absolutely not the case. So on our website, we would have a list of lenders that are approved for the PACE program in the state of Wisconsin, and the, the property owner, they would select whichever lender they want, which could be the same lender as their, if they have a mortgage. So we're not doing anything to prohibit any local lender involvement.
We're actually encouraging.
We're encouraging it.
We're reaching out to local lenders and trying to get them to participate, so. There's a question here.
Two questions. I'm looking at the resolution, and you had mentioned that voting members have veto power. So in our resolution, it says that the Door County, our representative would have a vote on your Board of Commissioners? So each member of the Board of Commissioners would vote on a project, whether it's in Door County, or Kenosha County, or...
Correct.
Would we have to have some background on that area, in order to make an intelligent...
So what would happen is, first of all, the lender, they would do their due diligence to see whether or not they would approve the loan. It would also go to WEC, because WEC is the, is the program administrator for PACE Wisconsin, they would do their due diligence, they would report back then to the, to the PACE Commission, which is made up of... is made up of one member from each county that's in the program. So part of what you're doing in the, in your resolution and the ordinance, if you were to approve it, excuse me, is you're delegating the authority to whoever's appointed. And by the way, I just wanted to clarify that, a county with a county administrator, the county administrator can also serve. That is the only exception, otherwise it has to be an elected official. We have, we have some county executives, but we just, we clarify that, a county administrator can serve on it. So the county, Door County, would be delegating their authority to whoever the representative is. So when a PACE loan would become before the commission, it doesn't have to go back to the county boards for approval, because you're delegating that authority. And that appointment is solely at the discretion of the county. If you have someone serving that capacity for six months, and you determine that you want someone else to serve on the PACE Commission, that is just a matter of the county notifying us who your appointee will be.
And then my second part was, you said 19 counties have expressed support for this project. How many counties have you visited out of our 72, have any said no?
Yeah, we have 19 counties that have actually approved it. We have a couple counties that we worked with, and here's part of the reason why WCA got involved as well, is because, and Jason will tell you, in the two years now that we've been working together, government is very different than the private sector. And the private sector tried to get into counties, they used terminology that wasn't accurate, it scared some of the counties away. And some, and some folks in the private sector were very, very aggressive, and the county boards didn't like that. So we have a couple counties that are taking a wait-and-see approach. We've met with them, they're interested, they're going to have us come back after there's more approvals. But I would say that is probably, well, two counties for sure. Two counties for sure that have, that have said, three counties actually, Rock County recently said, "We're going to take a wait-and-see, but, you know, we might, we might have you come and fall." So no one has absolutely said no to the program. And I say this as an elected official, I mean it wholeheartedly. If you are in a county that is surrounded by all other counties that have approved PACE, you are at a definite disadvantage for any business that may be looking at relocating, expanding, moving their business because of PACE. PACE is just, it's a wonderful tool. It surprises me that it's been, you know, passed in the United States and used some places since 2009, but it's really taking off now. And part of it is the sustainability efforts that the cities and villages and counties are doing. Because of tight budgets, they see that there's, there's a need to do energy efficiencies, and it's also taking off in the commercial marketplace. And truly, it's the smaller-to-medium-sized commercial property owners, and this includes multifamily, five units or more, they're the ones that really need the help and see the benefit of the program.
Megan?
What sort of stipulations, if any, are put in place as part of this program, as far as which vendors can perform this work, who can be hired to perform the work? Do they have to, do they require certain specifications, certifications? Is it going to take any fair-market business away from any of our local builders?
No, we anticipate that, what we've done is set up a very business-friendly process. We put the business owner in a position where they get to select, they get to drive the process. So, no, we don't require that they work with any particular contractor, so they can work with any contractor. We anticipate they'll work with their local contractors. We do require that the projects meet certain eligibility criteria. So what we do is, one of the roles that we'll do is, we'll review the contract, for instance, the installation contract, and then we'll make sure that the equipment installed in the contract is truly efficiency equipment. But other than that, it's any local contractor. As far as lenders are concerned, we do have qualifications for our lenders that are normal and usual, we want to know who's providing the financing. But otherwise, we've put the business owners in a position where they can use this tool as a benefit to enhance their business. And really, at the end of the day, it reduces the cost of doing business in your county, and helps create jobs and improve property values, so.
I think, so another hand up in the back? Yes?
Yeah, hi. I did have a question, actually, I wanted to also get Grant, Corporate Counsel, involved in this. So just looking at this resolution, it said the commission agreement, there's a draft, and it's attached, and there's, we're looking at three different criteria that needs to be met before we, this even gets, actually goes through. So I would like to just ask Grant, Corporate Counsel, if there was any concerns that he saw with what that commission agreement, is it drafted as-is? If there's any hangups with that?
No, I actually did have some concerns with the resolution, the commission agreement and ordinance, I relayed those to attorney Andy Phillips. His firm took a look at them, and they were okay with the tweaks that I did, primarily to the resolution and ordinance. But with the agreement itself, I have no particular concerns that weren't already addressed.
Okay, good, thank you.
And I would just add that, well, the Von Breezen firm has been just super to work with on this, and before we had the original drafts, we worked with a number of corporation councils in the counties that initially expressed interest in the PACE program. So we did a lot of work, thankfully, with the corporation councils and with county treasurers, to help draft the documents and get them to where they are today.
On page 17 of our packet, and again, this might be for our corporation council, but on page 17, third paragraph, it authorizes the Door County Administrator and County Clerk to execute the commission agreement, if we all decide to go that road. But it also says, "After review and preliminary approval by, number one, all other participating municipalities." Who is that?
I can respond to that. So in other states, first of all, in the state of Wisconsin, prior to PACE Wisconsin being formed, only the city of Milwaukee could do PACE, because they're a first-class city. So we did this as a generic draft, so that it could be used in all 72 counties in the state. So if Door County passes this, there's nothing that any other municipality in Door County has to do. It becomes available PACE-wide, or, excuse me, countywide. But we left that language in there, but a municipality, other than a county, doesn't have to do anything, it would become available countywide.
You mentioned about the boiler replacement, okay, but you also, I heard something about, or you mentioned something about enticing businesses to move into the county, and that you're at a disadvantage if your neighboring county has it. So what other things, I mean, I'm thinking about, I mean, can somebody buy an old building? I mean, what, I mean, what are some of the other things besides replacing a boiler? What could happen?
It would be anything that's energy efficiency-related, from saving electricity to saving water. It could be for software, it could be for controls, anything that saves money. And it also can be used, when I talked about a new business possibly relocating here, it can be used for new construction as well. So then, how that's determined is that maybe you put in better windows, or you put in more insulation, that normally than you would have, because you have the dollars, you have access to those dollars. So it's not only for existing buildings and redevelopment, but it's also for new buildings. So there's a lot of interest in, you know, in the hospitality industry, in the hotels and stuff, to use PACE.
Does that include solar?
It does. It would include any product that promotes sustainability and energy efficiency.
Geothermal?
Geothermal, yeah. Digestors for agriculture, you name it, anything that you can tie sustainability and energy efficiency to. And then, before I forget, I just want to mention that, PACE Wisconsin, Jason and his colleagues have done a really good job on our website. So if you go to PACE, P-A-C-E-W-I dot org, is the PACE website, we continuously update that, you can see which counties are involved, you can see which of the lenders are currently are listed on our site, and we're, you know, adding and things to that website all the time.
More questions I might have, maybe for administration. Has finance or administration looked at this from the standpoint, what, what will this cost us as far as having a person, if it's you, or if it's a board member? And how often do you have to travel? What is the cost going to be to the county to have this voting member?
Actually, there's, we did talk about, I guess, the several aspects. One would be, in essence, kind of a, how do we get this out there? And I know Caleb was in the back, so to us, it's one of those tools that DCDC could help have a tool in their toolbox in terms of being able to market it. In terms of other costs, I mean, we did have, I guess, lengthy discussions in terms of if there was a default. Obviously, there would be some work that has to be done by our treasurer, and also Corp Counsel, in terms of, you know, adding that information onto the tax roll. And then, you know, if it becomes, if it really goes under, and then after, if it has to go through three years, or two years of non-payment, and we got to go through foreclosure, we have to go through those steps as well. So the Finance Committee did review that, and Grant did discuss the steps and workload related to that, and Grant, you can add on to that if you'd like. In terms of the meetings, I mean, obviously, there'd be the, I guess, what you're calling would be the per diem, so if it's a board member, it'd be the mileage for that, and then obviously the meeting time related to that. In terms of the number of times that they meet, I'll defer that.
Our intent is, so the meetings that we call is necessary whenever there's a loan. So we're looking, except for the annual meeting, we'll have to have an annual meeting of the PACE Commission, that will have to be face-to-face. All of our other meetings, we're planning on doing via teleconference. And that's very, very similar to what we do with the Public Finance Authority. So very few expenses, and in the transaction fee that WEC gets, there's a tiny portion built in for commission expenses. So for that annual meeting, for travel and per diems and so forth, it'd be covered by the commission.
I was just kind of wondering about that, because it's like, okay, so if, what's the enticement to go and vote on some, a project for somewhere else? Obviously, you're going to show up, if it's a Door County project, yeah, I want to be there to vote on it, but, you know, I mean, so teleconference, that makes perfect sense.
I would say some of the counties, early on, said, "Well, how important is it for us to have a person appointed to the commission?" I would say extremely important, because why wouldn't you want to know what's going on in other parts of the states? So if there's good projects, you could be out there promoting that and say, "Well, look what happened in St. Croix, look what happened in Bayfield County." So I would strongly encourage that you appoint someone to the commission.
Just a comment, the next time, the other part of the commission may be voting on
Door County.
Right.
So, I mean, it's.
Right.
Tittin' pat.
Laura?
Yeah, question, on a state, for the state, for the PACE Commission, how many loans have been given out in this manner, and then even on a national? Because you, just kind of relating with numbers, with you saying there was no delinquents since '09.
We, there's been over 1,000 commercial PACE loans done nationwide. Milwaukee's had eight to 10 loans done. In fact, Milwaukee makes our state the fifth highest, or sixth-highest grossing PACE-enabled state. So there's potential, just based on what's going on in Milwaukee for the rest of the state. We just launched our program, so we effectively, the commission approved our financing agreement last month, and we're working on our first three or four transactions. They all have work to do before we get to the point where we can close those loans, but we're optimistic that we're going to have our first one here soon.
Until about a month ago, the largest PACE loan in the country was $10 million. We know someone that's working on one in Texas that is now 20-plus million, and there was one in California that was approved about three weeks ago at 40 million. So it's the largest PACE loan in the country at this point. The interest in PACE is just, it's spreading across the country, it's just unbelievable. So we're excited that we're somewhat ahead of the game of what a lot of other states are doing.
Is there a breakdown somewhere of which markets, or what sort of products, or, I'm
sorry, projects are being performed through these loans? Like, outside of Milwaukee, for instance, in Wisconsin, you had mentioned a couple different areas where they had been applied, where are these larger products falling?
I can talk about, generally about some of the property types, you know?
Well, right, are we looking at agriculture mainly?
Actually, well, we'd like to see some agriculture. We, one of our lenders has done the largest agricultural-related PACE financing in the country, it was a $4 million clean energy investment in a hog operation in Missouri. We brought them into our program because we want them to do agriculture-related clean energy investments. We haven't had one yet, we're going to do more work in that sector to help that sector recognize the benefits of the product. The property types, or the developers that we're seeing, we have a lot of hotel, hospitality-type buildings that are coming through. They range from, you know, 100-plus-year-old buildings that are going to be fully rehabilitated. In fact, in some cases, it's a, it's a property that's not on the tax rolls, that this is going to help go onto the tax roll, be a productive asset for the community. So we have a couple redevelopments, we have some office building redevelopments, where we have older office, office space, maybe it's 50 years old, and they're going to redo the HVAC lighting, put some solar power on the rooftop. Otherwise, I've seen sports centers, industrial facilities, and there's a lot of interest across kind of the commercial real estate market in general, multifamily as well, so. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
What do you consider the biggest benefit of the PACE loan? Is it the length of the loan, or does it have anything to do with the interest rate?
I would say the biggest benefit to the property owner is that they don't have to put any money out of pocket to do the improvements. So when you think about it, and Jason mentions this a lot, if this manufacturing company is making widgets, that's their expertise, and if the rate of return is too long, they can make more money making their widgets than they can making, than doing the energy efficiency. So what we're hearing as a rule of thumb, and Jason's more of an expert on this than I am, is that unless you're a really new facility, about 30% of your energy costs are wasted. And if you can save 30%, or a good chunk of that 30%, that's being wasted, that's a huge benefit. Not only a cost benefit, but it's the right thing to do for the environment as well. So to me, I see the fact that a property owner can pay for this entire loan, the payback is done through the energy efficiency, rather than taking money out of their pocket. Because most of those businesses, if they have to take money out of their pocket, they're going to invest it into their company to make more widgets, rather than do the energy efficiency. That's why this program was created, pretty much nationwide, and some of the precautions and safety nets were put in place to be an incentive for these companies to do the energy efficiency. But I see the fact that there's no money coming out of their pocket. And another big thing, it's a voluntary program. No business, if Dane County, if Door County passes this this morning, you may never have a business within your community that uses PACE. It's a voluntary program, if they decide that they want to use it, it's available to them. You're not creating a district where every property owner is required to use PACE, it's property owner by property owner. And if I own a piece of property in Door County, and I decide to sell it to Jason, it transfers over to Jason, it stays with the property. And no guarantees from the county whatsoever. So again, I say this, it's, to me, it's just a no-brainer.
I have a question.
Yep.
If we approve this today, how is it marketed to businesses in Door County? How do the businesses become aware that it's available?
Yeah, well, certainly, the county can have part of that, of the marketing. WCA, the League of Municipalities is involved, so we do our part that way. WEC is involved. One of the next steps that we plan on doing is reaching out to more lenders, and to companies that we think would be interested in doing PACE projects. So it's, it's all of our involvement, but certainly WCA will be part of that as well. I really believe that once the private sector is aware that this becomes available, they're the ones that are really going to be pushing it, that we're not even going to really have to do the marketing. And part of the reason that we wanted to go with the statewide commission and have the rules consistent in all 72 counties, is that there's a lot of developers and property owners that own property across county lines. So again, if they're in Racine County, or St. Croix County, or Bayfield, or Ashland County, or Door County, they're all operating by the same rules.
Who else? Ken?
All right, there's no commitment to the county, but yet, we put it on our tax rolls if it defaults, so we are on the hook.
No, so.
If I'm hearing you right.
So differently than normal, if you'd have foreclosure, and, you know, let's say Ait Harbor has some money invested into the property. Egg Harbor has some money invested into the property, the county then would typically make Egg Harbor whole. That is not the case with the PACE loan, because the municipality, no municipality's putting any money into the loan. So, if it would go into foreclosure, the first thing that would happen, the first entity that would get paid is the county for their expenses. Then, if there's money left after that, then others get paid. But you don't have to true up with any municipality, because no municipality within the county has put any money into it. And it's also not a guarantee. The county puts it on, the county agrees to put it on the property tax bill as a special charge. If it's not paid, the county doesn't pay it, and it actually, even in the event of a foreclosure, it stays with that property. So, it survives the foreclosure. So, if the county were to take property in foreclosure, and then it gets sold to another owner, that PACE loan is still out there.
It's also important to recognize in this, in this instance, in this scenario, that all of these transactions will have a very motivated mortgage lender involved. These financings are combined and layered, it's, it's a gap financing tool. So, there will be a mortgage lender, and that mortgage lender does not want to see their mortgage go into tax foreclosure. So, more often than not, the mortgage lender's going to step up and clean up any problems with the property. It's important to consider that.
Okay, I've got that. But if, I'm just saying, if, there's a foreclosure on a piece of property that's worth $10, and nobody wants to bid $10 on it, and the county wants to get it out there, so they sell it for $5 just to get it out there, because the county doesn't want to deal with that, it's still, the, the buyer of that property knows that PACE loan is there, and even though they got it for less than what the property's worth, they agree to accept that PACE loan, that's non-negotiable.
Correct.
Okay, so, now, tell me that the county puts no money up, the bank makes their money on the loan, they loan it for longer than they normally would, the, the user puts nothing upfront, how do you guys get paid? Nobody's putting any money in, and you guys are selling a product, how do you get paid?
The property owner is still paying for the loan, but they're using the energy efficiency to pay for the loan. So, built into the loan, we mentioned that WEC is going to get paid, there's a transaction fee that they get paid. If the energy audit is done, which has, which is the first step, the energy audit can be built into the loan. So, the fact that the fees are low, and the interest rate is lower, those things can be built into the loan, and the property owner is still saving money.
Okay, so, your fees are built into the cost of the loan?
Yeah, there's a one-time transaction fee, but I want, I want to make clear that in, in our program, the PACE Commission bills the borrowers directly. So, the borrowers are paying in semi-annual installments on these loans, and we're servicing that, that's our role as the administrator, and we remit those payments to the, the lenders. Okay? And, and so, we're talking about a scenario where there's a, a delinquency, that's, that's when it would, we have access to the tax rolls. But in normal and customary practices, we'll be billing and collecting off the tax bill, and the commission will, will service that role.
That's one of the main differences between PACE Wisconsin and other states. In other states, they have the county doing the actual collection for the payment, even before it would get to a delinquency. We said, no, we don't want the counties involved in the handling that money and the additional burden. So, an invoice is sent from PACE to the property owner twice a year. The county has absolutely no involvement unless it goes into delinquency. John?
I got a couple. If I understand you correctly, this is making it a lot easier to get a loan?
This is really, it's an economic development tool that you can add to your toolbox to help encourage businesses to reinvest and relocate in your, in your community. It lowers your cost of doing business in Door County.
It makes it easier to get a loan?
I, I would say that it's just another financing option out there. It makes it easier to do energy efficiency and renewable energy improvements to your commercial properties, that's what it does.
Sounds to me like they're not putting anything up, they're not risking anything, because it's coming through this loan.
They're absolutely putting their property at risk. They're, they're securing the financing with their property. So, they're, they're making, they're, they're making a loan, they're making repayments on their loan, and the loan is secured by the property. So, they've had to pledge collateral in order to secure the loan, and that's a very substantial commitment.
Cheap financing didn't help this country in 2008.
Well, this...
Can I, can I maybe add something? Again, the, the idea is similar, we have a, in Caleb's chair, we have Economic Development Loan Fund that's through EPA, or the money is passed on through the feds. Under that program, there's different financing terms far as job creation, stuff like that. To get the loan, you've still got to be financially strong, in other words, we're not, I mean, you take a little bit of a risk in terms of how you're financing the project, but in general, it still goes through all of the bank approval process to get the loan. In this case, you're doing the same thing. You're going to have a company come in that otherwise might not invest in green energy because they want to continue to make their widgets, but now you have this tool here that says, we're going to provide this loan to make that happen, that changes the cost model in terms of the return. So, maybe you're not putting in as much in terms upfront, in terms of your cash, but you're still, when you're going to the bank of doing the review, you're still going to have your debt ratio reviewed, you're still going to have to make sure that they're comfortable in making not only your mortgage payment, but the payment on this new technology and stuff like that. You've still got to be a, a sound company. We're not actually taking a, a different financial review of the company based off their financial position, they still have to pass the bank's muster in terms of being able, viable for getting a loan, I guess would be the best way of saying it.
Not, not only pass the bank's muster on the PACE loan, but also, because there's lender consent from the mortgage holder, that financial institution is also doing their due diligence and wouldn't approve it if it didn't make sense.
This, this isn't an offer to somebody who normally wouldn't be able to get a loan.
No, correct.
It isn't giving, it isn't giving...
No.
This is more about energy efficiency and doing the right thing, or, you know, being green.
We have two more questions on the back.
Who initiated this, the state government, or the federal government, or?
Well, that's a great, great question. I would say, this was initiated by a partnership of different entities. WEC, we saw this opportunity, in addition to Von Breezen and Roper. We worked closely with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, the Wisconsin Counties Association, Deonar Green Tiered Legacy Communities, so there's some state government involvement in that respect. So, it's that partnership that's really brought PACE financing to our, our counties and local governments.
So, who owns it? Is it a 401(c)(3), or is it the state government, or the federal government?
You know, PACE, PACE Wisconsin is a joint powers authority, so it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a local government entity. This, this is your commission. Your commission has a nonprofit, it's retained a nonprofit as an administrator, but that's, that's, it's the commissions, it's the counties, the local governments, it's Wisconsin.
So, with the legislation that was passed in 2009, and it's interesting, because we're working with one of the authors on the original legislation, who's now a county employee, we're working with him on this, and he said, you guys are very creative. He said, this was never our thought, that this would happen, and it would be a statewide commission. They thought that counties would do this on a, on a one-by-one basis. And if that would have happened, and we didn't form the commission, then there would be work for the county, there would be additional work for the treasurer, and for the corp, and corp counsel, and the administrator, and you would be collecting the dollars. So, forming the statewide commission, it's, it's collaboration, cooperation, and Grant can tell you more about that in statutes, chapter 66, oh...
Oh, 301?
Oh, 301, yeah.
Basically, it's, it's intergovernmental cooperation on a statewide basis, and that's how this entity, the PACE entity, has been formed. And by virtue of, if you choose to adopt the resolution and enact the ordinance that's before you today, then this would be available in Door County.
Ken?
So, you're an administrator slash agent. You're putting the, the players together, coordinating this all, because the banks don't want to hire a separate person to organize this, the county doesn't want to pay somebody to organize it, and the user can't go and put it together on their own, correct? You're the agent.
Yeah, we are the agent of the Wisconsin PACE Commission.
Okay.
Yeah, we would be your employee, effectively, or indirectly.
Okay.
Dan? Yep. Nope, Megan?
Just a clarification on a few things that I looked up in the meantime while we were talking here. There, I, I did find, and please tell me if this is correct or incorrect, PACE loan program providers, let's see, sorry, we, they do have to work with registered PACE program contractors? Is that correct?
You probably are looking at a different program.
Okay.
If you, I mean, we have, we have registered contractors in our program.
Okay.
They are contractors that, that are basically endorsed by our program. We don't require that our participants use those registered contractors, but we have small businesses on there that see this as an opportunity to grow their business, so they've registered with us.
Good.
We have a lot of engineering firms, we have general contractors, we have solar installers, a whole, lighting installers, they're all, a lot of businesses who see this as an opportunity to grow their business.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, and then...
But there's no obligation to use them.
Okay, thank you. And I think one of the biggest things that keeps coming up in question here, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but really, the loan's attached to the property and not to the borrowers.
Absolutely.
That's, that's like the biggest make or break.
Absolutely.
Right there.
It's, yes.
So, it could, there are positives and negatives to that, it could dissuade buyers in a selling, in a selling situation, because it is going to be attached to that property. But, the, it is also a pro, considering that it's easier to pay the loan.
Yeah, I mean...
I don't know if that helps any...
At, at the end of the day, we're, we're improving buildings, we're making buildings more valuable, we're improving the collateral. So, we're putting in new HVAC systems, new lighting, all those things add to the value and the attractiveness of the assets. When we can replace a 100-year-old boiler, somewhere in Wisconsin, we're doing, we're creating benefits.
And typically, what we're hearing from other parts of the country is, if a property is sold, usually, the PACE loan is paid off before the property is sold. Not always, but usually, the PACE loan is paid off. Well, thank you again for having us this morning.
Thank you. Very good.
So, just in case you think we're done with this, we're going to move right to the resolution on this.
I'll ask Kathy to introduce.
Thank you. I'd make motion to approve Resolution Number 201742.
Second. Motion, second. Questions or discussion on the resolution? We're going to go to the voter board on this one. Dave?
That has passed, 21 yes, 0 no.
And now, we're going to go, we're going to go down to the ordinance. Again, I'll refer it back to Kathy, which is on...
Page 49.
Page 49, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 201708.
Second. Any other questions or discussion? Go to the voter board. That has passed, vote of 21 yes, 0 no, thank you. All right, thanks, everyone. All right, we're now going to move back to the special reports, and we're going to have a brief update of Legislative Days with Rob Burke.
Rob, would you like to, Rob?
Rob?
Rob Burke.
Still here?
Yeah.
Got to wake him up.
Got to wake him up. He went to lunch.
Why not?
Did somebody steal one?
Well, I'd just like to give a brief report to you all on Legislative Days.
Keep one of the mic, that's a recording. On the Legislative Days program, we did another one of these in this year, and was it April? Yep. And I have some, mostly pictures that I'll show you, so you'll see a lot of your familiar faces.
No.
that a little bit later, but just some quick facts about Legislative Days, some of you are maybe newer to this than others, and the very first time we did Legislative Days, you can hit the next slide, Barb. Oh, I can do it? Next. We did this first time in 2003, and actually, I started here in 2002, and the very first meeting I got invited to, or summoned to, was a meeting about a group of people here in Door County who wanted to do a Legislative Days, because one of the, whoever the, in the late 1990s, the representative from this area in the Assembly, forgot his name. What was it? It was the one before Gary, before Gary Byes, not sure who it was, but he was noticing that there were groups from, coming up from Superior and Douglas County, and he thought they were having a really good impact, and he asked Mike Taylor, who was working for him as his aide, to get people in Door County busy, and see if Door County couldn't organize some sort of a program that goes up there and explains what Door County is, and what we're like to state agency officials, and explain it to the legislators, because there was a lot of misconceptions about Door County as being just a place without any kind of struggles or economic issues or anything like that, because of, of the image that we have. And he wanted some, a group of people to go down there on a regular basis and talk about the real Door County, and, and that's how this thing got started, we thought we could take that challenge, and, and we did. Legislative Days is organized by the Economic Development Corporation with partnership of community groups, local governments, a lot of departments in the county participate and cooperate in this. Major employers and businesses in the county sign on as sponsors and send delegates, and also, a lot of nonprofit organizations will participate and, and help out and, and partner in the, in the event. We started doing this jointly with Door and Kewanee Counties in 2007, and then more officially in 2009, and that made the program significantly bigger. Like I said, the purpose is to educate state legislators and, and state agency officials about Door and Kewanee Counties. And we also lobby on a limited set of locally important issues, and sometimes, there are projects that we're working on that we would like a little bit of state help to get over the top, and we have had some success with those issues. But it's education and the issues. High school students started participating as delegates in 2013, and this past year, we had 40 high school students who came down from Door and Kewanee Counties, and they were really excellent delegates, they lobbied on the same agenda and the same information that we did, and as adults, and they did a really good job. They lobbied on the same agenda and the same information that we did, and as adults, and they did a really good job. They were very well-prepared. Over the years, between eighty and a hundred and thirty delegates have normally participated in this project, gone down there, taken their time and gone down to participate. And I think we had about a hundred and thirty in this, this past year, which was, I think, the highest number of delegates we've ever had. Some of the issues and some of the accomplishments, some of the things we've gotten out of Door County Legislative Days, I'll run through, I'll run through these quickly, you can read them there. Uh, the big issue when we started in 2003 was, of course, what are we going to do about these bridges in Sturgeon Bay? Should there be two? Should there be one? Uh, basically, what Legislative Days zeroed in on was that, look, whatever you do to the old bridge, before you do any, before you close that bridge, build the new one so that we don't have a divided downtown for a whole summer. It would have been an economic disaster for the downtown. And that's what we decided to lobby on, that was how we split the issue. And, uh, and it was successful, they agreed with us, and they actually did build the new bridge before they did anything to the old one. Uh, we've also had some success with Legislative Days in getting money for our shipyard, shipbuilding master plan and implementing that. The Harbor Assistance Program, which we lobbied on again this year, was always something that we were, it seemed like every year, it was coming up as something that's really critically important. Safety for, water safety for beaches, funding for testing. We did manage to get our countywide ambulance service exempt from the levy limits because we noticed that there were several other towns or villages throughout the state that were allowed to do that. And Door County was able to join in on, on that benefit. Last, a couple of years ago, they got the money to restore the Kewanee Harbor seawall. Uh, and we helped lobby for restoration of the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Fund. And then I, this is mostly pictures, so here we have some pictures going back. Basically, this, these are from this past year. We have state agency meetings, and, uh, so we have our delegates show up, and we have our people present to the state agencies on these issues that are really important to Door County harbor assistance, the seawall, groundwater quality, um, all that was, was presented to the state agency officials. And there's some pictures of the people who are lobbying. Page. Lots of in-kind contributions, we do have a banquet on the first evening of the program, and, and the food is provided by Door and Kewanee County, uh, producers and restaurants, and it's very, quite tasty, very popular. We invite the legislators and their aides and the state agency officials to come over for that so we can continue lobbying them and talking to them, educating them during the, during dinner. Some more pictures over the past years. Our meetings are held in the State Capitol Building and sometimes in the Department of Administration Building, which is very close by to the Capitol. And, uh, some old faces. Oh, we used to do a fish boil, we would hold this, so the banquet on the first night was, oftentimes, we'd do a fish boil in the parking lot of the Inn on the Park, but they remodeled the Inn on the Park this year, and they don't let us burn a big fire in the parking lot anymore. So we couldn't find another place that would let us start a fire. And so we ended up not having a fish boil this year. And the 2017, our legislative, the issues that we went down there on were, they're listed up here. We supported the proposed funding for improving rural broadband. Uh, we had an issue to protect drinking water in our cars' topography area, we lobbied on that. Protecting water quality in our rivers, trying to seek funding for what's called a TMDL study, which is, gives you sort of a baseline of where the surface waters are at as far as pollution and what you can eventually do about it. We oppose the repeal of the statewide school start date. And we ask for consistent and adequate funding for the Harbor Assistance Program because that's so important to the shipyard cluster and things here in Sturgeon Bay as one of our port cities, harbors. And a little bit of update on some of these, the, uh, the budget hasn't been passed yet at the state, so it's hard to say that we actually have succeeded in getting some of these things. But so far, the TMDL funds are still in the budget, and hopefully that will move towards passage. Uh, some of the broadband money that we were asking for is still included in the budget, and we're hoping that continues through, as well as the Harbor Assistance Program funding, I believe is in the budget as proposed, and hopefully that will be passed too. So we're on track on several of these issues, hoping they look pretty good. Uh, the school start date does seem to be dead, so I get, whatever efforts we had to help that were successful. And those are some of the issues that we had this year, and, um, that's sort of my report. Don't have anything else, it's a little rundown of it. Any questions or comments, and I know many of you participated, and if you had a good experience or, or not, love to hear about it. That's it, okay.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. Welcome. Okay, we're going to continue with our special report section, and we're going to move on to the Crime Prevention Foundation, the K-9 unit. Mr. Sheriff? Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Sheriff.
With the resolution for the K-9 unit, I thought it'd be a good time to update everybody on where we're at with this. As of two weeks ago, we have raised fifty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. As you can see on the addendum, our costs and what we have spent so far, and the anticipated costs for the rest of the way. We, we have, uh...
It's on page eleven of your Zoom, where it starts.
The three donated items so far was a bulletproof vest for the dog by Lyndon Nalt, one of our former dispatchers, at a cost of a thousand dollars. Veterinary care by Sherry Billit at Peninsula Veterinary Hospital. And vouchers for dog food from Blackwood Pet Food in Green Bay. So as you can see, we have more than enough to cover the K-9 and to move on to, um, either funding other, like the DARE program or things like that, or saving for a potential second dog in the future. We have, uh, upcoming tomorrow, if you're hungry at lunch, the Bank of Luxembourg is having a cookout, rib sandwiches for five dollars, and that's going to the K-9 unit. The Masons are doing a brat fry at, uh, Econo Foods in July, that's going to the K-9 unit. And in August, the Door County Board of Realtors are having their benefit Beanbag Toss Tournament, I believe. And, and all of that is going to the Crime Prevention Fund also. They are, uh, they had done a golf tournament three years ago, the Board of Realtors, and that went to the DARE program, and that was five thousand dollars they raised. So we're anticipating something good coming out of that, so. If there's any questions on costs, or, I know you had some public comments on it. And, um, there may be some questions on that.
Laura? I have a question, hi, Sheriff Delarue. Um, as for the reporting and this resolution is proposed, it's asked that we just report on the K-9 unit. Are your intentions to report more on what that crime prevention is established for? You know, if it is the DARE program, et cetera?
Anything, the, the report, on the annual report will indicate all monies donated, total amount. We won't disclose who donated what, but it will have the totals donated and itemized list, just as you see here, of what was spent. I don't know how more plain we can be.
So the, the fund is at the community foundation?
Correct.
And you will go to the fund as needed, is that a fair statement?
We will go to the advisory committee and meet with them. Whoever is requesting to withdraw money from that, say the DARE program would want to...
Right.
Want to, they would basically apply for a grant out of it, and the advisory board would meet and say yes or no.
Other than that, any excess monies is managed by community foundation?
Correct. I have no, I can't go in there and take it.
Right.
Nobody else can. Uh, the advisory board is the only ones that can release money from there.
I'll ask a clarifying question. Because the donations or the money is given through the community foundation, that's why there's no access to, nor do we know who is donating the money to the fund.
Correct.
It's not an issue of, we're keeping it quiet, we don't know who donated to it.
Correct.
Because that's on, that's on the other side of the fund.
Uh, I believe I missed the pending business part because I thought you guys were...
But we're not there yet.
Oh, you're not there yet? As always, if you have any questions on this or concerns or anything, call me and, and we can discuss it. This is very open, we're not trying to hide anything, we're just trying to get a dog in the county, and...
There's a lot of dogs in this county.
Yes, thank you, Sheriff. So, as I listened to Mr. Fricks, uh, you're disputing his contention that there are some get out of jail free cards being given out, correct?
I am disputing that, yes.
I thought you would, thank you.
I, I, I wouldn't know who to give them to.
Do it randomly.
No. And, and it won't be used to finance anybody's election either, which was the last thing I heard.
I guess I would like to make a comment, and it goes back to my years of service in the Door County Sheriff's Office. When we started the first K-9 program, that too was provided a lot by donations. However, the county did pay for the portion of maintenance care and ongoing care where this program, people have stepped forward anonymously, so to say, and they give to this community foundation for a specific reason, or they can name a specific reason. Uh, that's the big difference between then and now. Uh, like I said, our, our first program began on donations, and Mr. LePey from LePey Gas Station gave the most, opened up his gas station for a couple of days in July, and we took the profits off of his gas at that time. So it's, it's not that we have never done this before. This is, I think, a cleaner way and an easier way to, to see money come in. Um, so I applaud this effort.
Yes, the only thing I would mention, again, because we're talking about the money and the issue was raised, any of the funding still is, and what's happening with the unit, the program is still subject to our law enforcement committee oversight and overview. Whether we accept the donations or not still has to be accepted and approved via the county board. So that mechanism is still in place and remains in place.
And everything that we buy will go to the law enforcement committee and let them know, here, here is what we're asking for. Um, you know, get their approval also. It's, it's not, uh, it's not going to be just, I think I'd, you know, I'd like to have this, you know, it'd be cool, but, um, I, you know, it, it has to be something that we need, and it's something not budgeted for. And that's all we're looking at.
Steve?
Another comment I'd make is, everybody just needs to realize that it can, it can go away just like it went away once before. So, I mean, it's not like it's, once it's here, that something can't change, so.
Sure.
Laura? Yeah, I just want to also add, Sheriff Delarue, this is a similar model to what Brown County has also established, correct?
They have a similar, um, they have a Crime Prevention Foundation. This was kind of modeled after it, but theirs was like the one that you guys voted on last year, where they took, they added on to citations and took, added a twenty-dollar fee on to citations and take it off of that.
Oh.
Which I don't believe in, and I, I'm, I agree with your votes that you didn't do that. This is just by voluntary donations, it's not tacking it on to anybody.
Thank you for clarifying that.
But the, the overall premise of how we're doing it, I mean, distributing money is similar to them.
Right.
You know, where, where other, say, Washington Island, Sturgeon Bay PD, if they would need something and we had extra money, they could put it in for a grant.
Grant for it, great, thanks.
Mail? Sheriff?
Thank you.
We will move right up to the, um, page ten, your Zoom, the resolution for the K-9 unit. Over to John, please.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. And I would make a motion to accept and approve Resolution Number 2017-41, K-9 unit.
Second it.
Whereas a K-9 unit can be a cost-efficient and task-effective tool for law enforcement, and whereas a primary challenge to forming and maintaining a K-9 unit is funding. Whereas a private nonprofit organization within Door County, namely the Door County Community Foundation, Inc., has launched the Crime Prevention Foundation. The Crime Prevention Foundation is a component fund of the Door County Community Foundation, Inc. Donations, gifts, or grants to this fund may be used for crime prevention and/or to strengthen law enforcement, community relations. And whereas effort to solicit donations, gifts, or grants for the K-9 unit have been successful. Whereas State Statute 5952-19, Wisconsin statutes, empowers the county board to accept donation, gifts, or grants of money for any public governmental purpose within the powers of the county. And now therefore be resolved that the Door County Board of Supervisors does hereby approve the formation and maintenance of a K-9 unit, provide such fund is principally through donations, gifts, or grants. Be it further resolved that the Door County Board of Supervisors does hereby accept the funds, i.e. donations, gifts, or grants, for the purpose of which such are offered as set forth in Addendum I. Be it further resolved that annually, the Sheriff's Office shall submit a report of the K-9 unit to the law enforcement committee. The report shall contain at least all of the following information for the year to which the report relates: receipts, grants, gifts, or donations accepted, and expenditures for the purpose for which the grants, gifts, or donations were used.
Questions, Doug?
No. Can I second it now, or?
You already did.
Well, you kept on reading, so I would...
You're, you're already ahead of yourself.
I would point out, there is a slight cost to the county, and that has to do with payroll requirements for the weekly maintenance, just so we're clear about that.
Correct.
Which is approximately twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars annually.
And I think that was included in the addendum provided?
Any other questions, comments? Dave?
What was the discussion as far as if this private funding should dry up? What was the discussion as to how to handle the continuation of the...
If that dries up, um, that could ultimately end the program. We would have to revisit, uh, the maintenance at that time, I guess, but we don't know that until this occurs.
And so we're really not doing any kind of budgeting beyond the, the labor aspect of it?
No, so, so, and we talked with, and Steve, you can back up, I can kind of answer. So what we're hoping to do is, again, their goal is to, through their fundraising activities, to actually offset the costs of the unit for each year. So what we'll do is, well, in essence, we'll show the budget expenditure within the budget for the K-9 unit, but we'll also have a revenue, a revenue source identified as well, showing those funds coming in. Now, should those funds dry up, just like anything else, we go through, we have to go through that process of determining whether or not we want to maintain that service. So.
So there'll be a checks and balances kind of thing?
Yes, exactly, correct.
And then what happened to the last one? I do remember having the K-9 unit, why did that disappear?
Well, the reason it disappeared, it died through longevity after the dog decided to retire and not perform so well, which is average eight years or so, unless you find a super dog. The county just didn't agree to continue the effort, the current sheriff at that time didn't agree to continue the effort, and it just kind of died on the vine.
This is more related to the age of the dog?
Correct.
Participating, fading at the time.
Yeah, there are limitations.
Yeah, there are limits that the dogs can handle for their lifetime cycle.
Steve?
Just a comment to Dave's question. I mean, it is pretty clear in this resolution that if it isn't from donation, gifts, and grants, then it ain't going to happen without us re-investigating, revisiting this.
I just like the word principally.
Well, there is, because there is that little amount, for sure.
Right.
Helen?
So, it's most of the expense then is upfront for purchase, training, et cetera, and then?
Correct.
In the following years, it's mostly just maintenance?
Mostly maintenance. A, a new expense would come on the occurrence of a lost dog, or the, the death of a dog, or adding an additional dog. Then we would have to make sure those funds were there by the foundation.
So, would the actual annual funding be much more than this?
It's difficult to say. If you were replacing a dog, it depends where it comes from, who does the training, and how that particular.
But then that's a one-time expense.
Correct.
You could go back and ask for more donations for it.
Anybody else? If not, we'll go to the voter board. That has passed, a vote of 21 yes, 0 no. Thank you. Okay, before we continue, does anybody want a brief break? Press on, okay. We'll kind of go back up to the top of the agenda.
Yep.
We'll go to item nine, Administrator's Report.
Sure. So, this one, I'll, I'll just be brief. I know everyone has either gotten emails or contacts in regards to the back 49, and what is the county going to do. I just want to give you a little bit of background. Again, so, at Legislative Committee, there was a communication that was provided at Legislative Committee, and that item was not, just based off the time in the communication, we did not add it as a agenda item. So, that committee did review it, and they actually have it placed on their next agenda. And we also reached out to the individual that requested it, and they're hoping to attend a meeting. I, I know we also talked with Mr. Fisher in terms of possibly also placing it on the LCC agenda. So, I guess both of those committees will be reviewing, I guess, the draft or the adopted resolutions from Marinette County. And they can decide whether they want to co-sponsor it, or move forward, or not move forward with it, and then that's how it will be handled. I guess all I'm trying to say is that I do not feel it necessary to, in talking with Dave, to adjust our, our normal process for moving forward. We're sending it to our committees for their action and consideration, and whatever action they take forth, they can provide it back to this full County Board for action. So, I just wanted to provide an update because maybe some people heard different things of how we handled it. But I just wanted to let you know of the communication that we have. I know there was some discussion of why didn't we address it back in December. Again, we went through, we're not fully aware of if it was sent by mail or whatever, but if it does, the normal process would be is we send it out to Legislative Committee, and it's up to them to, if they want, add it on to the agenda at that time. I'll be honest, we're not sure if we got it, or if we just didn't add it on to the agenda, but we do have it brought up as a concern, and we're going to handle it and move forward that way. So, I just wanted to address any concerns that might have been shared with you as a County Board.
Badger Sheriff's Association Conference.
I brought this up at Law Enforcement Committee, and instead of a formal letter to you, they thought it'd be a good idea to explain what went on at the Badger Sheriff's Conference personally, so, nothing. I, I wanted, I wanted to just come and say thank you for the $1,500 that was, was given to cover some of the expenses, or basically to promote our county, and wanted to let you know where that went and how the conference went. We took, when, a little background on the Badger Sheriff's, it's an association of all the sheriffs in the state. We meet four times a year for conferences, training. We have a, a day of roundtable discussing problems that sheriffs have. And the, January, February, they have one always in Madison, you meet with your legislators. The other ones are throughout the state, whoever, whatever sheriff wants to host it. As soon as I took office, I got a call from the Landmark, "We want a Badger Sheriff's Conference here." So, I worked on that, got it here this past May. They usually end up booking about 40 rooms. And based on, you know, what, what they have, what sheriffs have going on, there's usually about 35 that show up for a conference. They, they set aside 40 rooms at the Landmark. We ended up with 80. We invited, we put it out to all the sheriffs, "Bring your wives along. We will have something for them to do." My wife and Lieutenant Louder's wife chaperoned them. We used some of that money for the trolley and took them on a five-hour tour of Door County. They took them to Door County Coffee and Tea, Winery, Eating and Egg Harbor, Shopping and Fish Creek, Wood Orchards, all that. When it was done, there was, I believe, 22 wives that came, which is, the most I ever saw at a conference was four. So, it was, it was a big success. We also had the rest of the money we used for gift cards for stays up here, Stone Harbor, Newport Resort, and the Landmark, to bring them back. So, that's, that's where your money went. At the end of the conference, they, they sat down, the President and the head of the Badger Sheriff's Association came and sat down either side of me and said, "I don't know if it's the county or the training that we had, but this is the biggest one we've ever had. Would you be interested in hosting it every May?" I said, "Absolutely." So, they're going to bring that up at the next conference to see if that will move forward, but everything went really good, and thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add to that. Sheriff wanted to send a letter. I just thought it was important that every County Board Supervisor and Chair understand how that money went and how successful it was for our county and the businesses it included. This is a big deal when we provide monies to these types of, or types of activities, you know, within the county, and to see a, a return, I, I thought it was more important for him to say it in person than, than by letter. So, thank you.
And we also have the DARE Conference coming to Stone Harbor in July. They'll be doing the same type of thing. And thank you to Ken for his coming to speak at the conference and give a little welcome, welcome presentation, which went over really well, giving door prizes and everything. So, again, thank you, and I, I also told them that if we do do this every year, I can't guarantee $1,500 every year, but we will take care of their, their needs. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff.
Good job. Resolutions 2017-39 in Memorandum, Morium, sorry, Leroy Levy. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, as soon as I get to it here. Resolution Number 2017-39, Memoriam of Leroy Levy, to the Door County Board of Supervisors, whereas Leroy Levy passed away on May 28, 2017, and whereas Supervisor Levy was duly elected to the Door County Board of Supervisors in April of 1990. He was re-elected in subsequent years and served through April 2012 for a total of 22 years, and whereas Supervisor Levy represented Supervisory District Four in 1990 and 91, including the Town of Gardner, Town of Nassauapi, Ward's One and Two, and the City of Sturgeon Bay, Ward 7.1, 9.1, and 17.1. After redistricting, Leroy served District Five, including the Town of Nassauapi, Ward One, for the remainder of his tenure. And whereas Leroy served on many committees during his tenure of public service to the county government, including Chairman of Airports and Parks, Ag and Extension, Archives, Ad Hoc Specialized Transportation, Senior Resource Commission, and Social Services. He also served on Board of Health, Museum and Archives, Economic Development, Bay Lake Regional Harbor Council Rep., Highway Land Conservation, Recycling Fair Advisory Board, Property Unit on Age, Property, excuse me, Unit on Aging, Ad Hoc Home Rule Study, and Ad Hoc Committee on Realignment Restructuring. Now therefore be it resolved that the Door County Board of Supervisors, assembled in regular session this 27th day of June 2017, extend our sincere sympathy to the family of Leroy Levy with this acknowledgement of his service and dedication to the citizens of the county of Door. I make a motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, Resolution 2017-40, Committee Appointments to the Board of Health and Sister City. Somebody here to make that motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's two appointments being made. The first is the Board of Health, Roy Enkelbert, by the County Administrator, and the second is the Jindzing Sister City Ad Hoc Advisory Group. Laura will be replacing Roy Enkelbert on that committee. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. opposed? Resolution 2017-43, Recount Reform. Susan?
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2017-43, Recount Reform.
Second, ma'am.
This is a motion supporting a bill that's making some adjustments to the law that we currently have in place in Wisconsin, dealing with recounts. It allows some adjustments to make it easier for the people who have to do the recounts, be able to manage them. It deals with making sure that in presidential elections, we would get a recount finished in time to get our Electoral College votes in. It allows some tweaks to allow us to get the bills paid, the, the cost to the taxpayers and so on. And seems like a reasonable approach to making some of these adjustments.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Ordinances. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion, we accept the report to the Door County Board of Supervisors, Amendment to the Zoning Map of Jacksonport. Requested its, Cherry Lortzen petitions for an amendment to the detailed zoning map of the Town of Jacksonport to rezone 21.2 acre parcel from estate to mixed-use commercial. The vacant land is located west of State Highway 57 and north of Bagno Road in Section 22, Town 29, North, Range 27, East. The rezoning request is being sought so that the applicant may apply for a conditional use permit to establish a campground, and also apply for a regular zoning permit to establish a retail store. Neither use is allowed in the Estate Zoning District.
Second.
Any other questions, discussion? We'll do a voice vote on the report. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, ordinance 2017-05.
Then I would make a motion, we adopt the Amendment to the Zoning Map of Jacksonport for Cherry Lortzen, 2017-05.
Second.
Questions? Give me just a moment here.
I'm trying.
I messed this up for her when I didn't do the voter board.
Yeah, it was a good mistake.
On the last resolution, so. So, what we're going to do is we'll voice vote. These following ordinances, do we need to do a?
Roll call.
Roll call?
Yes.
Okay, so, the first one for the, adopt the zoning map of Jacksonport for 2017-05, would be a roll call vote. Okay, okay, so, okay, okay, hold on, hold on. We're, we're going to go back, we're going to go back to and do the voter board.
Sure.
On the resolution for the recount reform.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I was surprised when we didn't.
Hopefully, we'll be able to move forward then. So, this is on the recount reform.
What if it loses?
Don't change your vote.
Daniel?
I am trying. Good job.
Okay, that has passed 21, 0. So, that didn't change, okay.
Now, we can go on to the next one.
Okay, now we are in 2017-05, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, we're ready? We can vote?
Fisher's not voting. Just wait, just wait.
That has passed 21, yes, 0, no.
Just doing some deep thoughts on that.
Ken?
All right, I make a motion to accept the report to the Door County Board of Supervisors, Amendment to the Zoning Map of Bailey's Harbor. Dale Williams, doing business as Harbor Construction LLC, petitions for an amendment to the detailed zoning map of the Town of Bailey's Harbor to rezone a 4.09 acre parcel from light industrial to mixed-use commercial. The parcel's located at 8280 Harbor Parkway, Section 18, Town 30 North, Range 28 East. The rezoning request is being sought as part of the sale of the land to the adjacent campground, Bailey's Grove Campground, so that the campground may apply for a conditionally used permit to expand.
Second.
Questions? Okay, we'll do a voice vote on the report. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Harry?
Now, I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to adopt the zoning ordinance 2017-06, Amendment to the Zoning Map of Bailey's Harbor in regards to that, uh, Williams request.
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion on that? We'll go to the voter board. That has passed 21, yes, 0, no.
And now, I make a motion to accept the report to the Door County Board of Supervisors, Amendment to the Zoning Map of Liberty Grove. John Fitzgerald, doing business as J.F. Materials LLC, petitions for an amendment to the detailed zoning map of the Town of Liberty Grove to rezone a 55.42 acre lot from Heartland 10 to light industrial. The parcel's located at 10796 County Highway ZZ in Section 2, Town 31 North, Range 28 East. The rezoning request is being sought so that the applicant may apply for a regular zoning permit to construct a building to be used as a trade and contractor establishment. This use is not allowed in the Heartland 10 zoning district.
I'll second that.
Questions? Voice vote on the report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing?
All right. And now I'd make a motion to adopt the zoning ordinance two thousand seventeen zero seven, Amendment to the Zoning Map of Liberty Grove.
I'll second that.
Questions? We'll go to the voter board.
Sorry, I think my batteries are bad.
Hit yes and then hit no.
Hit no.
Is that a violation?
Wait a minute.
You have to ask the question.
Special reports were done with, new business, oral committee reports. Anybody want to make an oral committee report? Review Committee Minutes. Review Rogers Claims and Bills.
I had a question. If I can remember what it was. Yeah, there was something in there. Now I'm going to have to look at it, because if I don't...
What's the question?
I wondered what it was. I believe it was like twenty-seven thousand dollars. Maze Sports Center, twenty-two thousand dollars. I was curious what that was. Where are you looking? Lawnmower. Lawnmower?
Guessing, I guess.
Under parts?
Yeah, what department, what case?
Building maintenance. Building maintenance. I guess I should.
One more.
That was the tractor, okay.
All right.
Announcements, the next regular county board meeting is scheduled for July twenty-fifth at nine a.m. The county board retreat is scheduled for July twenty-seventh at eight till twelve-thirty. Do we know where?
It's going to be at the Carrington, which is in Egg Harbor.
Can you explain as a new member what that is?
Sure, so, just some background. What I did is I sat down with David, and I guess one of the things, I just wanted to, I know I've done some presentations in terms of the budget, and some of the issues that we're facing in talking with David, we thought it'd be worthwhile just to have the full county board and the department heads in kind of the same room, so we can kind of see what we're facing in the future in terms of the budget, but then also try to generate some ideas as a group, just to see what areas we want to focus on in terms of moving forward. So that's what the goal of the retreat is. So we'll be...
We wanted to mix it up, kind of get it out of the county building, where we can go sit down in a room and sit down and talk, and work out some ideas.
So that's what the intent is for.
Discussion, yes. WCA Annual Conference, again, September twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth in Wisconsin Dells. I've been asked to mention two things about that. Jill originally asked for people that were going to go, so she could make the room reservations. She made those reservations. There's been a few cancellations by individuals here since then, for whatever reason, and that's fine, but that does cost us twenty-five dollars per room when we cancel. She's held onto them. For the meantime, if somebody who was not going to go wants to change their mind, let her know, and she can retransfer the room. But more importantly, this coming month in July is when we have to register everybody, and that registration is a hundred and eighty-five dollars. So if you're not going to go, tell us now, so we don't spend a hundred and eighty-five dollars, because that's not refundable. We won't get any of that back. So, that's the announcement. The meeting per DM code is two seven seven. It's two seven seven.
That's right.
Biz?
What is the address of that inn in Egg Harbor?
We'll get that out to you.
It's at the Landmark. It's the Landmark. It's the Landmark Resort. It's the restaurant and the Landmark Resort.
All right. Again, the IM code again, two seven seven. Ken?
If there's no further business, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that. Nice one.
We may need to go to third one.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.